And so I'm gonna call the meeting board at this time. And the first item, item number two is discussion regarding building permit and certificate of occupancy permanent process.
Counsel, on the permit process, first slide. Each permit submitted to the city is filed and assigned to permit tracker. The tracker helps the permit technician to ensure all required plan reviews occur, helps staff identify where each permit is in the approval process, and what fees are paid or due. That's the copy of the form.
Who is the permit tracker?
Who's the permit tracker?
The permit clerk.
And who is that? Just any of the clerks in City Hall?
No, it's the admin assistant, it's the permit clerk currently.
Who is?
The admin assistant.
What's the name?
Kristen.
Kristen.
Yes, ma'am. Okay.
Who's the permit tracker?
It's the permit clerk. Residential permit process. Residential permit application. Residential permit application packet contains residential permit application, contractor registration form, backflow device inspection and registration information, information on residential, electrical, plumbing, and mechanical upgrades, prepares to include when a permit is needed, and what submittals, if any, are required when obtaining a permit. Information on residential remodel additions to include how the work is defined, when a permit is needed, and what submittals are required when obtaining a permit. Residential new construction permit submittal requirements, residential new construction plan review checklist, residential new construction inspections checklist, information on residential energy inspections, information on residential accessory structures, information on residential fence permits, information on residential swimming pool requirements, and information on residential swimming pool fence requirements, and information on building requirements, current codes, and inspection contact information.
This packet is given to them by Kristen before they have a permit, so they can go over all of this before they ask for the permit?
Depending on what it is that they're planning on doing, yes, ma'am.
What do you mean?
Well, when I get further into it, it'll define and describe me.
Oh, so they have to put in an application to get the packet for some of it?
No, ma'am.
Frank, how about this? This is really formal, and I don't know, maybe everybody else knows differently. I'm thinking about walk me through as I'm normal Choblo, and I wanna know. And there's gonna be two instances, right? Either it's brand spanking new, or I have something I'm gonna want to do. What do I do?
Okay.
Can anybody have a problem with that? Because that's more meaningful, I think, to most of us, that this is how we operate. And then you could say, okay, you can get this application.
Frank, you're not very far into your presentation. Is that kind of information coming?
It is. I mean, it's forthcoming. The main thing is, is once we move through the information, if you write down any questions, then we can refer back to you. But if we get in... If you get off into questions and answers, then we're gonna dive further into the slides, and then come back, and back and forth, and there's gonna be portions that you're gonna miss. So I understand the formality. However, this is how we get to the information and making sure that we don't miss it.
I'm just concerned that if you're gonna walk me through something, and I'm still constantly trying to digest it as I am just coming in, and I wanna know how to go through this process. And so when I'm even looking at what you have right now, I'm like going, okay. And I am sitting there going, okay, I'm just gonna sit and wait till the very end then?
That would be retarded.
Okay, because that's gonna be my logic of how I'm gonna constantly look at every page. It's, okay, where does that fit when I come in and ask for something?
Well, right now, we're kinda like when you open up a book, we're at the index. So it's what's provided.
Okay. Go ahead.
So, okay. Go ahead. A new residential building permit. Permit's permitted, submitted to the city. The permit technician will determine the permit fee and research zoning for the address given. The permit is then sent to Bureau Veritas via courier for plan review. Bureau Veritas will conduct, contact the permitee if any additional information is needed. Once approved, the permit is sent back over to the city via courier. The permit is then sent to engineering for site and civil plan review. Engineering will contact the permitee if any additional information is needed. Once approved, the permit is sent back to the city and water and sewer fees are determined. The permitee is then notified that the permit is approved, ready for pickup, and fees are due. When the permitee picks up the permit, their permit, and pays all required permit fees, the permit technician releases the permit for inspections through Bureau Veritas. The permitee will call into Bureau Veritas for inspection. When the permitee is ready for water service and the meter set, they must come to the city, complete the service application, and pay the water and sewer fees that are due. Go ahead. Residential addition or remodel permit. The permit is submitted to the city. Permit technician will determine the permit fee and research zoning for the address given. The permit is then sent to Bureau Veritas via courier for plan review. Bureau Veritas will contact the permitee if any additional information is needed. Once approved, the permit is sent back to the city via courier. The permitee is then notified that the permit is approved, ready for pickup, and the fees are due. When the permitee picks up their permit and pays all the required permit fees, the permit technician releases the permit for inspections through Bureau Veritas. The permitee will call into Bureau Veritas for inspection. Go ahead. Residential miscellaneous permits. This is where a plan review is required. The permit is submitted to the city. Permit technician will determine the permit fee and research zoning for the address given. The permit is then sent to Bureau Veritas via courier for plan review. Bureau Veritas will contact the permitee if any additional information is needed. Once approved, the permit is sent back to the city via courier. The permit is then... The permitee is then notified that the permit is approved, ready for pickup, and fees are due. When the permitee picks up their permit and pays all required permit fees, the permit technician releases the permit for inspections through Bureau Veritas. The permitee will call into Bureau Veritas for inspection. Residential miscellaneous permits when no plan review is required. The permit is submitted to the city. The permit technician will determine the permit fee and research zoning for the address given. The permitee is then notified that the permit is approved, ready for pickup, and the fees are due. The permit is then sent to Bureau Veritas where it is accepted for inspection only. Generally, this process is done while the permitee is in the office so as not to require additional trips to City Hall. And the permitee will call into Bureau Veritas for inspection.
Our broker has a question.
Go ahead.
Number two, I noticed it's on all of them there. The permitee is then notified that the permit is approved, ready for pickup. That's coming from City Hall, right?
Yes.
Okay. Is that by phone, or by mail, or by email?
It's whatever means that they ask you to contact you.
It's really phone?
Typically, phone.
That's all there is.
Okay. Now we're into the commercial permit process.
Okay. So stop. If we're done with residential, talk now.
All right.
Okay. I still don't understand. You gave me an official process. I have no idea. I'm gonna have a fence put up. What do I do?
Let's go back to the permit process where...
No, I don't need the permit process, because I can read that. I'm sitting here, and what do I do? Do I call you up, you'll tell me where to go find it? When you send, is it on the website? It's...
The permit technician will direct you to the permit that you need to fill out.
Is that the only person that'll tell me?
Generally, in your contract, we fill it out.
Okay, that was one of my other questions, too. Does my general contractor do this? Do I have to do it? Okay. Is it on the website?
I believe it is.
Okay, good. So it's on the website, that should tell me. And this probably the same process is out there. Thought it was.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, okay. So go through that. Good, I got that. Where I can call you up, and you'll walk me through the same process. The other question, then, was when you say the permitee can call Bureau Veritas. I wouldn't know what to do with that. Does it tell me on there? Do I call, when I call? It does?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so I'm not seeing all the granularity on here about, okay, you call Bureau Veritas at XYZ, when your work is complete?
This step was in there, as far as what step you notified to contact Bureau Veritas.
Well, it's at the very bottom. Call the Bureau Veritas for inspection.
Yes, ma'am. But it's gotta be accepted by Bureau Veritas where it's accepted for inspection only.
So maybe it's that third part that's...
But where's it telling you?
I'll tell you the type. You land, it's a trailer, engineering, inspection.
I know type, but how does this person know to call this company?
They're giving the contact information.
It's in the original package. Can you go back to the package?
Sure, please.
There's the app. I'm gonna try to re-read this. So there's the application. And that's the entire package.
Yes, ma'am.
So when somebody picks this up, I'm sorry.
Did you get these before you fill out the application so that you will know what is required of you? Or do you have to fill out the application to get the packet?
Well, you go back first.
You don't have to fill anything out. You can just go in and say, I want a residential permit application packet from Kristen. It is the permit.
Yes, because you need to go through all of this to figure out what's...
That's what I wanted to know.
Okay, and the actual permit application has Bureau Veritas's number, and it tells you when to call?
Yes, once the permit has been received, Veritas has been reviewed. If they have any questions, they'll contact the permitee. Okay?
Last step. Last step, says call them for inspection?
Well, that's once your plan has been reviewed and accepted.
Okay, all I'm saying is, you're assuming I really understand this process. I'm only doing the fence because I saw something on the website that says, you're putting up a fence, you need to get a permit. And I do my thing, and I get the stuff from you. Does it tell me?
We're walking through this.
Does it tell me on the end of that process, the inspection, you need to call, when the work is complete, either you or your general contractor will call Bureau Veritas at this number?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, that's what I was hoping.
Is Kristen the one that you contact for all of this? She is the only one at City Hall that is in charge of permits?
She's the one that's, yes.
And then you get... She is the permit technician. She is the residential miscellaneous permit. You pay a permit fee. Is there a set amount of all of these permit fees that you can see when you go in? Or is it she determines the amount?
We use a calculator provided by Bureau Veritas.
Okay. Then she... But we don't... But there's no way of knowing the different... The different fees for the different applications, I guess is what I'm saying. From, not from contacting you, but from contacting City Hall.
Yes.
Does she tell you right then? I mean, do you have a... Do you have a scale of prices that the fees are? I guess is what I want to say. And can a person just pick those up?
The permit fees are on our website. There's a fee schedule on the website. And the value of a permit... A permit fee is based on the value of the work, which the application form asks you for. So if you have a value of work that's being done, if I'm having a fence put up and I know it's gonna cost me $9,500, then Kristen can tell you to the penny what your permit fee will be, as long as you can give her the valuation. And the fee schedule on the website, it gives you a range, so that you have an idea. But it... We are gonna get to the penny, when you get to the penny with your valuation.
Okay, but it is on the website under...
It's in several places.
But under ordinances, the fee schedule is under ordinances, and then in various places under the permitting department.
Yeah, I think the only thing, because the website's very helpful. I think the only thing I still get lost on sometimes is when it's not new construction. Then, and I can't remember off the top of my head how detailed we were in explaining to a homeowner what is something that requires a permit.
Okay. And they can always call an acquirer, because we are, fences don't require one.
Honestly, you know, people get real nervous about calling and finding out how much it's gonna cost. So anything we can help them with on the website, kind of point some a little bit. But yeah, that was the only one I was worried about, is if you've got a crime thing. I mean, there's a lot of discussion on webpages, not ours, just out there, about what the homeowner really can't do. So I don't know how much granularity we actually get out there. I mean, I know we've got swimming pools, and we've got fences, but I don't remember how much else we've got out there. I mean, you can't put in your own hot water heater and...
Just to touch on that, and that's very important. I mean, I know, you know, the everyday homeowner doesn't understand those. I get that. But one of our services we provide is, and not only the Van Alstine, but several other local cities I deal with. One of our services is if Jennifer, or Kristen, or Frank, or whoever gets a phone call and they don't know the answer, they're more than welcome to call me. I mean, I get calls all the time. What do I need to do and drive up? What do I need for a fence? A swimming pool? You know, a dollhouse? You name it. Ten years I've worked up here, we get all kinds of questions. So we will, you know, they can defer those questions to us. And we will help them through the process, either to the point of you need to do this, this, and this, or, well, you know, what you're doing really doesn't require a permit. There's not an inspection that's gonna be required. So just so the council knows, you know, that is one of our services that there's no charge for. We're here to help you and help your citizens to let them know, if the city doesn't quite know the answer, they can always send you a plan.
And here's a suggestion, too. Because I do understand why we want to have permits. I think a lot of people don't understand. They see it as a money grab. Let's be honest, that's what they think the city's doing, it's a money grab. Can we put something out there? I think it behooves us to explain why we go through inspections. Because, you know, if people don't know how to wire correctly, because they think it's really simple, you know, what they're looking at. I mean, I think that is helpful to explain why we go through this process. Because most people, they're honestly just look at us every time. They go, ah, they just want fees. I'm not gonna do it. Whatever's right.
I can touch on that as well. I mean, you know, the... We don't tell any cities what codes to adopt. The city, y'all are the governing body, the authority, have a jurisdiction. You put a code in place, we enforce it. So in the codes, it's very specific as to what requires a permit, what does not. There are state laws, through TDLR, State Board of Plumbing Examiners that require licensing for electricians, plumbers, HVAC people. So what you've adopted really has already put in place as far as what permits are required. So...
You're talking to me, I gotcha. What I'm trying to say is the common man doesn't...
No, I getcha. I get that.
You're still not saying the benefit of what you provide. And I know you're beneficial. But saying we provide codes and we're following codes does not give me a warm fuzzy as Joe Smith. What gives me a warm fuzzy is you say, we go through this because it's for your safety, it's also insurance. I mean, I think there's a paragraph, and I'm not looking at you for this. I'm looking over here. I think as a city, we could put some sort of re-explanation on it. Like, why it's important to have the process and allow you to make certain that things are safe.
Sure. Well, and again, I go through a lot of... I've done this for a long time. You know, you have ISO accreditations. You know, I went through one to dozen with the municipality that they're trying to get their insurance ratings up, their bond ratings up. They wanna know who does your inspections, what codes you're under, why you enforce this, why you enforce that. So there are reasons. I mean, you know...
No, no, and that's a good point, too. Because if we get better insurance ratings as a city, right? Doesn't that bring then everybody's house... Another excellent point that I'm just saying, if we could... I think that kind of transparency and explanation, I think that's really beneficial to be able to say that.
We can work with council to come up with a study. It's more than that.
I think it'd be great.
Also, everybody understands why it's there.
Because otherwise...
And we'll help if you need it.
It seems like an onerous, negative money grab, and it's not true. And I think we should be able to explain to people that it does come back around to them in insurance rates and, you know, their house not burning down.
Sure.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Now, I know that you're up on all the codes and everything, but we do have some requirements that are in our ordinances that may not be in that code. Do you ever come up against something that the code says it's okay? How do you know that we don't have an ordinance that says it's not?
Well, we...
I mean, what do you do in that situation?
We have to be... We have to be sharp enough. And fortunately, that's part of having been here for almost ten years. I know most of your ordinances. You know, the city's job, Jennifer and Kristen, you know, y'all have an ordinance change, they give it to us, so we have to come up with it. But, you know, ordinance is ordinance. Code is code. So, you know, we have to apply both of those individually.
So you are notified in our ordinance?
Oh, yes, ma'am. Yeah, they do a great job. And I mean, like, for instance, you know, there's nothing in the code that regulates fences. There's nothing in the code that regulates trees and landscaping. But city ordinances or plan development, PD ordinances. So we have masonry. You know, the code doesn't say you have to have 80% red. That's the local city ordinance. So we have to apply both of those to every project we do, depending upon the zone. And they help us with the zoning, and then we take it from there. We look at the zoning ordinance, and we say, okay, you know, you have to have 60% masonry, futurism, whatever the case may be. But yes, we have to. It's challenging, but we have to keep up the both sides.
So you are notified?
Yes, ma'am. They do a good job of both sides.
When you turn... When you do the permit, it does say this meets not only the codes, but the city ordinances also.
That is correct.
And the individual has to... I mean, it's a turnkey. I mean, a done... It's a done deal, I guess is what I wanna say.
And I'll give you an example. Because it's... Everybody knows, sitting in this room, Georgetown, rapidly your own. Not only do those houses have to meet the codes that are adopted by the city, they also have to meet the city ordinance. So we have to look at both ends. We're not just going out there looking at code. We're looking at your ordinances, that this council, or many previous councils, since I've been here, have put in place that we have to apply and make sure that we're doing what y'all have put in place.
And there are different ones for different zoning.
Yes, ma'am, there is.
And I presume this is part of your contractor services with us, that you are required?
That is correct. Two things we do not do in our contract. We don't collect money, and we don't issue permits. That's their job. Other than that, we work with them on zoning. That's kind of a, especially in commercial, that's kind of a quirky deal because our plan reviewers in our office don't know Van Alstine like I do, growing up in Anna for forty years. So I know a little bit more than they do, but I'm not looking at those plans. Collecting money, issuing permits, that's their job. Once that permit's issued, we take it over, and we take it, you know, from start to finish.
Good deal. Thank you.
In the...
Yes, ma'am.
In the residential... I figured we're gonna break this up into residential and commercial.
Yes, ma'am.
So can you give me an example of miscellaneous residential permit?
Like an awning or pergola?
Well, you went through it.
Meter release, gas test.
And your hot water heater.
Hot water heater.
Oh, wait a second.
HVAC replacement?
HVAC replacement.
How do you say it?
Uh, air conditioner. It's a...
And then, um... So for residential, we only... When I say we AP home, it's really... The city only looks at engineer. Bureau Veritas looks at the actual architecture.
That's true. I mean, if we're...
We're going for it.
Yeah, engineering's looking more at the sign and overall plans, and Veritas is looking at the structure and...
To kind of make this... Engineering looks at horizontal?
Correct.
Building inspections looking at vertical.
So we are looking at... Engineering is looking at where the builder or the contractor is going to tie into the city along. And that serves to that... Bureau Veritas is making sure that that house, that dwelling meets the code and the architectural plans are set forth for electrical, mechanical, and plumbing and everything.
So somehow is an individual supposed to know if they need a residential miscellaneous permit?
They can check the website, or they can call City Hall.
Anything that you do, you have to check, see if you see what is required. And where for a residential miscellaneous permit? Where are those things listed?
Permits on the page on the government page.
Up here you had a residential miscellaneous permits, the fees and everything. Other than the...
Fees would be in the fee schedule.
Okay, but how... Say, I want something that's safe. What?
I'm gonna say it now, it'll be trouble.
You need it? Because we have no... As an individual, you have no idea what you're supposed to get a miscellaneous permit for. So do you... Every time you do something, you're supposed to check with the city to see if you can do something at your own?
That's advisable.
That's why I'm asking for a paragraph to explain something.
But you need to know.
Because I'm guilty of it. This is... Because I'm guilty of it. Most homeowners will not replace their own water heater. Most homeowners don't replace their own HVAC system. Most homeowners don't rewire their own house unless they're an electrician or performing services outside their home. So when you hire somebody to come replace your water heater because it blew up, typically that plumber or that contractor knows to contact the city and say, I'm replacing a water heater here, and they come and pull the permit for you.
Yeah, but ceiling fans, light fixtures.
I don't think that's...
Lowe's and Home Depot say, go ahead, do it yourself.
You're right. You're right.
And you shouldn't.
I have had people over the years contact me, believe it or not, not just here, but many other cities, you know, ask me if they have to have a permit to change a light bulb. And I mean, serious.
That's the only thing that you're allowed to do.
No, no, they can change a... Homeowner has exemptions. They can change a ceiling fan, they can change a light switch. You know, there's a lot of things that...
Only if you're the homeowner though.
If you have the homestead exemption, as a homeowner, under certain circumstances, you know, water heaters, that's not Van Alstine's law, that's not... That's the Texas State Board of Plumbing Examiners. TDLR governs a lot together. You know, they're... But I get a lot of calls, and I mean, most people are, if they're in doubt, you know, they will call. Hey, I've got a, you know, my faucet's leaking in the bathroom sink, and I need a new faucet. Do I have to have a permit? No, you don't. Plumbing law says unless you're going down to the P trap or the drainage system, you can do that.
But what I'm saying is, if we had some basic kind of explanations for that, and then to say why, because, I mean, the first time I went through it, I read that I pretty much couldn't do anything, and because I was a landlord, I can't do anything on my own, except change my wall. And then you get mad. You know, you have to keep reading to understand why. So I think it's beneficial to explain the why. But at the same time, you're also explaining it to homestead people. Okay, if you're a homestead, there are certain things you can do. But, you know, we suggest you call for your safety, blah, blah, blah. Because it really does come down to about how much nothing you can do yourself.
There's a lot of variables. I mean, you know, honestly, I mean, put together, I honestly don't know that you could touch on everything that a homeowner might call and ask.
You'll probably have some good basic summary.
If we have a permit to change, pull our carpet up, and put our carpet back down. There are a lot of variables that I've had questioned over twenty-four, twenty-five years that I'm, you know, like...
Still gotta be some basic questions that cover reading your sign. You know, where you can say, resident, ask yourself that.
No, I'm just saying, I'm just using that as an example. You know, pretty much from our standards, and I work with the city, you know, if it's a cosmetic issue, you know, painting your trim, painting your porch, painting your house, you know, that's not a permitted type issue. The code's pretty well addressed what is a required permit. And there is even some things that even though it's addressed, you know, can be negated, you know, as far as a permit requirement. But I'm just... I'm not trying to be smart. But there is, I've been getting all kinds over the years. You know, I've had all kinds of... People call me and say, well, you know, I'm changing out all the switches in my... people call me and say, "Well, you know, I'm changing out all the switches in my house, do I need a permit?" Well, technically you do, but if you'd have just done it and I didn't know about it, no, you wouldn't have, but now that you told me, it's my job to say, yes, you need a permit because you're getting into the electrical branch circuit wiring system if you're not a licensed electrician, so, you know, it's, it's a, it's a, it's a tough situation because there are so many variables of a residential or commercial property that people may want to do that, you know, may apply, may not, may be a gray area.
Could you forward to us sort of an eighty, twenty, good simple questions to ask yourself, there's gotta be some references to God, but-
Yeah, I-
There's a simple way to, do, do any other cities that you serve have something like that on your website?
Not that I'm aware of, I mean, I can do some checking, but again, the majority of it is, you know, the homeowner, landlord, business owner, whatever, whatever capacity they're at, you know, they, they typically will call and say, you know, "Hey, I want to do this, do I have to have a permit?" You know, no, you don't, you're fine, or yes, you do on this, but you don't on that, so, you know, because like I say, I mean, it could, you know, we could, we could put a list together this thick, you know, when you start talking about, do I need a-
And I know me and that, and I, I've researched a lot of them too, because I was looking for some answers, because I couldn't believe they told me I couldn't do some of the things we wanted to do. So, they aren't overly helpful, which is why I think we could be different, be a little bit more helpful and, and provide also the justification behind it, because I've done the research on it. They aren't helpful and it's very confusing and it is for people's safety, so I don't see any reason why we shouldn't do this, why we do this.
Something like that would at least get the conversation going to where that person's saying that, it's like, well, maybe I should call somebody instead of just trying to-
Right, because they're on the fence and then they start to go, "Oh, well, I didn't think about, I didn't think about my insurance at the time, oh my God, I voided my stupid insurance policy." You know, I'd be pretty upset after I burned the house down to go, "Oh, geez."
That's called a protest.
Yeah. Anyway, don't need to beat it to them.
Yeah, well, uh-
If you're a homeowner, it's a homestead, and you live there with this, by the sense, have to have a permit.
No. I know where you're coming from, what you're talking about. And, you know-
I'm not sure about this, it wasn't pre-entirement.
There are exemptions.
Yes.
And to go back to our first question though, if, if you have to hire somebody, they should, if, if they're a trade person, if they're a plumber, electrician, HVAC, something like that, they pretty well know they need to get a permit for the activity that they're planning to do or they know they don't.
They don't like to take the time to come through the permitting process, but-
Well, I understand, I understand, but, but-
So all I'm saying is information and informing the res, you know, informing people, there's nothing wrong with putting a little bit of brief out there, it's not like we're telling them exactly what they must do, although we are. It helps them.
And I'll say my question louder now that I know it's all right. But if you are a homeowner and you have the, and it's a homestead, and the immediate family is a licensed person, is the set, they can bring without a permit?
Well, and I'll expand on that, I'll expand on that a little bit, straight from the TDLR rules. If you're a homeowner with a homestead exemption and you occupy that home, they don't even have to be licensed, that's, that's on you. I mean, if you want to hire a Joe Blow to come wire your house, that's on- No, I, no, I'm just explaining so that everybody understands, you know, as, under the homestead, you're allowed to do it, you want to go get somebody else to do it, under the homestead exemption, that, that's, that's why you have homeowners insurance and everything else. You know, so, yes, that's, that's one of the new things under TDLR, that, you know, you're taking responsibility, not the city, not the inspector, you're taking responsibility for who you hired to do this work.
But it would negate your insurance more than likely if you burned your house down.
Yes, it could, but that's, that's your choice.
So it is not suggested. Right. No, I know, but everything, the house and doors on. Okay, good.
Yes, ma'am, I've got my shirt, I'll go get some.
Yeah, I still don't even think Frisco's helpful. It's probably more burdensome. They have a lot more codes.
What's your?
As if Frisco has a lot more codes, it's probably more burdensome than-
Well, that's where I came from, years ago, so I'm familiar with Frisco, thank you.
Years ago, wasn't of any size, so.
I know.
I, I do want you to be very polite, that if you are in doubt about a residential miscellaneous permit, can you, you can go on a website and find out if you need it.
The city website.
And that is under what? Paul W., you're telling me, under ordinances?
It's pretty easy to find.
You can go on the search term and put in permits, you can go to permits on their, on their government or departments. So-
I want, I want to go to the city. Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, commercial permit process, commercial permit application, commercial permit application packet contains an introduction to the process page, asking important initial questions of the applicant, a description of the commercial permit process, a description of the contents of the commercial permit application packet, an acknowledgement form for the applicant to not acknowledge that they have read the information provided, that's something that came out of the last council working on this process with us. The commercial permit application, contractor registration form, backflow device inspection and registration information, commercial permits and middle requirements, new remodel, new slash remodel, commercial plan review checklist, building requirements and inspection contact information, certificate of occupancy inspection information, and business emergency contact information.
Is it the same as before, you can get this packet before you apply?
Yes, sir. You can come and pick up the package or you can find online. New commercial building permit, permit is submitted to the city, permit technician will determine the permit fee and research zoning for the address given. The commercial plan review fee is collected upon submission, the permit is then sent to Bureau Veritas via courier for plan review. Bureau Veritas will contact the permit team if any additional information is needed. Once approved, the permit is sent to Bureau Veritas Fire via courier for plan review, that's a separate entity. Um, it's same organization, just to set, set the place. Uh, permit is then sent to engineering for site and civil plan review. Engineering will contact the permit team if any additional information is needed. Once approved, the permit is sent back to the city and water and sewer fees are determined. The permit team is then notified that the permit is approved and fees are due. A pre-construction meeting is scheduled and held before the permit is released. When the permit picks up, when the permit team picks up their permit, after the pre-construction meeting and pays all required permit fees, the permit technician releases the permit for inspections through Bureau Veritas. The permit team will call into Bureau Veritas for inspection. When the permit team is ready for water service, meter set, they must come to city to complete the service application and pay the water and sewer fees that are due. And upon completion of construction and passage of all final inspections, a certificate of occupancy is issued.
How often, because I noticed we're actually expending money already, starting with number two, number three, four. We get down in there before we actually ask them to pay anything. Do we have, is it very expensive and do we have many people that start it and stop it?
It depends, but the commercial plan review fee, number one, is collected upon submission.
Oh, sorry, okay.
So we're trying, I understand what you're saying, we're trying to get it as we go forward, so that way it's not, you know-
That's what I was looking for.
As we do, as we, as they do work, we do work, we're trying to make sure it's-
Yep, I guess that's a good idea.
You're welcome.
At what point does this, certificate of occupancy is kind of a new thing for me, I don't understand as well. At what point in there does somebody under, supposed to understand that that comes up? I mean, if you're a small business, you probably are, it's familiar with a CO, so, what point in that process do you get introduced that that's going to come up?
That you shouldn't occupy the building unless you're doing any remodeling or construction, that's a separate permit, without sufficient knowledge.
Well, if I just like pick up one of the downtown places, you know, give it to you paper business or whatever, and I lease the building and I go, "Okay, I want my happy way." I'm not, I can take it. So, I'm not doing a building permit. Is that a totally separate process?
It is.
Okay, okay, so that's why. So, the, the CO for this process then comes up and where-
For our new commercial building permit. Yep.
Way back at the beginning, you know, that was coming up.
It's just a part of the final inspection, so the very last thing here identifies that once you pass all the final inspections, you're issued a certificate of occupancy.
Yeah, no, no, I can read that I'm issued, I'm asking, at what point in one through ten did I know I was going to have a CO issued? To know if I have any issues with it. You gotta be looking at my business or what my, sorry, not my business, yeah, my business.
Well, the, the, the two big things that drive a certificate of occupancy is either a change of ownership or a change of occupancy classification. Let's say, you know, you got a flower shop and they want to turn it into a restaurant, well, they're gonna, that's a, and again, it's addressed in the codes and I understand the everyday person doesn't read the codes, but, you know, that is part of our educational process, that, you know, I get calls all the time, you know. Am I gonna have to have a CO, you know, I'm looking at, matter of fact, I'm dealing with a individual right now in Van Alstine that I've been in that building, I've done four COs over the last six years, uh, and we're working on our fifth one now, that they're changing ownership and they're changing occupancy. So she called and said, you know, "Hey, am I gonna, my people moved out two months ago, am I gonna have to have a CO for this new business?" Well, what are you doing?
So when does that happen?
That, well, that happens, that's a little different, you have to look at it in a few aspects. New construction and then just change of ownership or change of occupancy. New construction, you know, Brahms, Jack in the Box, places of that nature, those people know that they have to have a CO, you know, because they're used to dealing with that all over the metroplex. Some of the internal downtown areas that I've done, pretty much probably everything that's up here right now, uh, gets, you know, number one, when they go in and fill out their application, you know, for what they're doing, you know, the city's gonna tell them, you know, you're gonna have to apply for a CO.
So step one, they will now learn that there's going to be a CO at some point?
On that particular, yes, on that particular instance, yes, I mean, if the flower shop is turning into a pizza shop, then, you know, they're gonna tell them what they're gonna do. They have to fill out an application, they ask for some skilled work, so them and myself and Bureau Veritas are gonna know what they're doing. They're typically gonna be calling me within the first two or three days.
And I don't doubt that, I'm just asking where in one, two, three, four processes, where does the CO come on? And you just told me step one, number eight.
This is what you're discussing is specifically different from new commercial building-
No, I'm asking on new construction, that's fine, but at step one, it's gonna come up that they, you're gonna be asking about what kind of business and that there's gonna be a CO.
Yeah, because we research, and step one, we research the zoning, so if you come in and you want to build Brahms on the highway, we're immediately gonna look up the zoning and make sure that our, you know, restaurant with the drive-through is allowed in that zoning category. And if it's not, we can help you through that process.
Thank you.
And to open up any new business, you know, they're, they're, you know, it's required to have a certificate of occupancy.
Don't doubt it.
We have to come in there, the fire marshal has to come in there, set their occupant load, check the fire extinguisher, all that kind of stuff, so-
I mean, my goal here, guys, is, I know Brahms knows how to do this, I'm thinking about somebody who doesn't know how to do this, and we've thought about people that don't know how to do this. We know the big ones come in here because, you know, I mean, the hard part's making sure that they do what we say, because they're used to getting their way. I'm talking about the guy that doesn't know that, how we address them also.
We try to catch a lot of people, when they come in, of course, it doesn't catch everybody, because some people are on, you know, shared utility meters, but we try to catch a lot of people, especially downtown, if they come in and apply for a new water service at a, a commercial address, we let them know, "Hey, you need to get a CO, here's the application," you know, "for whatever you're gonna do."
Okay, but that's all new construction, so, that's okay.
I have a question. In this new construction, can you have someone that's, uh, say you have someone that doesn't really want to go by all the rules? And you have, they're, they're doing fine and they're building this building and they sort of, uh, in the, in the middle of the string, they make a change, how often do you check them from when they start and when they're finished, because in the middle, do they say, "Well, they won't catch us, we can just do this this way," and it goes? And then, the permit's not, and you do catch them?
Right.
Okay.
Gold and chip is a perfect example.
That's fine, get it, man.
I mean, the, the goat, you know, they had trouble with, they had a little trouble with Bureau Veritas and had a lot of trouble with engineering, because they, they skimped on a lot of their concrete parking lot and we found a lot of construction errors, so we said, "Stop, fix it, and go back," so-
How often do you check them?
I have an inspector here every day, so we check them every day.
Okay, now, and my next question is, if the permit is not granted, because they didn't bring it up to-
Well, okay, the permit's granted.
Say, but say they, they didn't, okay, and you say, "Okay, you've got how much time to bring this up to the, what is the time span, and the reason?"
There is no time, it's your order, right? Yeah, the timeframe, we, we can wait as long as they want, they just won't get a cer, a certificate of occupancy to open the business, they gotta have the CO to open the business at that place. We will not release to the city, engineering release or Bureau Veritas release for them to open the business, so they, they're at risk of keeping you out and-
So there's no timeframe, so, and that takes forever, but they don't lose their money?
Well, their money's already been paid for the permitting process, they just can't open for business.
But, you say it takes them a lot longer, they, 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 they don't lose their money or anything, they're just, they're just gonna sit there, they're, they're right.
They may incur some additional inspection fees, either from Bureau to Veritas or engineering, because we have to go back and keep inspecting and we keep a tally on that and then for the final release of, for the CO, we'll, we'll send you, you do the same thing, we send you the invoice of final inspection fees that were incurred based on the progress, you know, go, go-
Go to the chicks, what are we thinking about now, often, did you check, you know, to everybody with-
Yeah, when do we have a chick?
Is it ever gonna open, is it ever gonna open?
Right, and, and, and they had some serious construction issues that, that their contractor didn't want to address and the owners just kind of looked by. We had video, we had video, we had tested, we had everything on it to say, "This needs to be fixed before we're gonna release it for CO." And it finally took corporate, gold and chip to come in and say, "Get this fixed, get it done, and we're off." So, but that's certificate to answer your question. Certificate of occupancy for a commercial site is needed for every business that wants to open at every location they're at. So if they move a location, they need a new city, because they, they moved to a new location, it might have a different zoning.
Which we will cover that instance later.
Yeah, we'll get the whole slide. So that's almost like the city's blessing on you being able to operate your business in that capacity in that location. You're right. Then you've met all the city codes, you know, you're open for business.
So there's really no penalty, you just can't, don't, you know, they're just giving them.
Their money is, their money is, they're willing. You know, they're, they're lacking the revenue that they would have anticipated that a lot earlier. Go ahead. Uh, commercial addition slash remodel permit, permit is submitted to the city, permit technician will determine the permit fee and research zoning for the address given. Commercial plan review fee is collected upon submission, the permit is then sent to Bureau Veritas via courier for plan review. Bureau Veritas will contact the permit team if any additional information is needed. Once approved, the permit is sent to Bureau Veritas Fire via courier for plan review. Bureau Veritas Fire will contact the permit team if any additional information is needed. Once approved, the permit is sent back to the city via courier. The permit is, is then sent to engineering for plan review. Engineering will contact the permit team if any additional information is needed. Once approved, the permit is sent back to the city and water and sewer fees are determined. The permit team is then notified that the permit is approved and-
The permittee is then notified that the permit is approved and fees are due. A pre-construction meeting is scheduled, if desired, and held before the permit is released. When the permittee picks up their permit after the pre-construction meeting, if desired, and pays all required permit fees, the permit technician releases the permit for inspections through Bureau Veritas. The permittee will call into Bureau Veritas for inspection. When the permittee is ready for water service, meter set if necessary, they must come to the city, complete the service application, pay the water and sewer fees that are due. Upon completion of construction and passage of all final inspections, a certificate of occupancy is issued. Commercial miscellaneous permit, plan review is required. The permit is submitted to the city, permit technician will determine the permit fee and research zoning for the address given. The commercial plan review fee is collected upon submittal. The permit is then sent to Bureau Veritas via courier for plan review. Bureau Veritas will contact the permittee if any additional information is needed. Once approved, the permit is sent to Bureau Veritas Fire via courier for plan review. Bureau Veritas Fire will contact the permittee if any additional information is needed. Once approved, the permit is sent back to the city via courier. The permit is then sent to engineering for plan review. Engineering will contact the permittee if any additional information is needed. Once approved, the permit is sent back to the city and water and sewer fees are determined. The permittee is then notified that the permit is approved and fees are due. A pre-construction meeting is scheduled, if desired, and held before the permit is released. When the permittee picks up the permit, picks up their permit, after the pre-construction meeting is desired, and pays all required permit fees, the permit technician releases the permit for inspections through Bureau Veritas. The permittee will call into Bureau Veritas for inspection. When the permittee is ready for water service, meter set if necessary, they must come to the city to complete the service application, pay the water and sewer fees that are due. Upon completion of construction and passage of all final inspections, a certificate of occupancy is issued.
Why does this one have a plan review required or not? Why does it have that plan?
This is if, on a commercial permit, miscellaneous permit, if a plan review is required. So, on some engineering is required, on some engineering is not.
So, the other ones didn't specify inspection also?
I don't know why I thought, you know, they just do it after.
The next one should have changed a couple of things.
This is the only one that has a plan review required?
Yes, because this is commercial miscellaneous permit with plan review required, the next one should be without plan review required.
But, the new construction involves planning?
Yes, yep. So, this is a commercial miscellaneous permit where no plan review is required. The permit is submitted to the city, the permit technician will determine the permit fee and research zoning for the address given. The permittee is then notified that the permit is approved, ready for pickup, and fees are due. The permit is then sent to Bureau Veritas where it is accepted for inspection only. Generally, this process is done while the permittee is in the office, does not require additional trips to the city at all, and the permittee will call into Bureau Veritas for inspection.
I have a question, and I just asked him about this Bureau Veritas Fire, and he said that we had changed a couple of months ago.
Yes.
And we've changed that we no longer do fire inspections, it's all done through-
Through Veritas.
Through Veritas. So, we, the city does not have fire inspections?
No, the Veritas handles it.
Veritas handles it, and all things are just in the commercial or?
In all things, residential, residential doesn't necessarily require a fire.
Well, we got the multifamily.
Yeah, we got multifamily.
Both that family?
Sure.
So, it does, then, and the plan review for fire, because that was one of my questions too, so Bureau Veritas is doing the plan review for fire?
They're doing all of it.
So, you all have the flow tests and pressure tests and everything?
Well, we're not doing flow tests, we're doing, we're doing hydrostatic tests, you know, we're doing hydrovisuals, you know, everything that's been approved by the city, but, you know, the flow test should really be done before the plans are even sent in for design, on the calculations for the water flow and everything else, so, no, we don't do the flow test, but we do hydrovisuals, anything that the city would be doing, flow tests are typically done, you know, yeah. Prior to keeping in the flow test for the site, so they'll have it for their fires, fire permitting, and then, then they'll have the onsite. But, and we are still following the city's ordinances on any type of fire stipulations as far as, you know, remote FDCs, hose lays, everything else that comes about, you know, we're, we're still complying with their ordinances.
So, when did we turn on our fire inspectors open for Veritas?
Couple of months ago. Yes, ma'am.
When it's required or desired, who's present for a pre-construction?
Typically, engineering, Bureau Veritas, the permit technician.
And public works.
Sometimes you and I will tend.
Are they just done when an ad hoc?
Larger projects where you're gonna have multiple subs, and they need to know who's gonna be handling what, typically, but, smaller projects, you know, I think my question-
Regular schedule of when you just go ahead and review everybody that wants, it's just when they come in and you do it?
It's when they come in. Because the whole thing is current in time.
And a lot of times, the, you know, the contractor may decide at the last minute that they want to have a, at least on my part, on a vertical construction, you know, they may call me two days before they start, say, hey, can you come out here and meet with our electrician, plumber, HVAC guy, did it on the elementary school additions, we got it on the land beyond, the multifamily, and the, and the senior living centers, so, you know, we'll go up there at any given time, if they call us, a lot of times, you know, it's kind of spur of the moment, just for the contractor's sake, you know, hey, what do y'all expect, you know, how do we do this, how do we do that, and we're the works great, I mean, just, so far, everything we've been doing all up here right now, running smoothly.
I'm just wondering, when you get to the point that, that, you know, you can't afford people to keep calling, you know, flexibly?
Well, for the engineering, for like a site, a commercial site plan, like, related, we'll, I'll withhold the group plans until we have that reconstruction, then I issue them at the reconstruction meeting, that way I know the general's got it, the plumbing, or the utility subs, begging subs, everybody's in the room. This is who, here's your inspectors, here's the engineering, here's Steve, and you go through step by step the responsibilities, and when, when calls are needed for inspection, and before you cover, before you cover any piping, you know. Yeah, eyes on it.
Probably too much recent to play in the elementary extent.
Yeah, yeah.
And we also had one with Stone Hollow, and Ford's been around for a while, we had one with Stone Hollow, or with Ford a couple of years ago, on the new one, they didn't, they didn't need the same size, so, they knew all the players on the same side. Go ahead, Jim. Certificate of occupancy permit application. Certificate of occupancy permit application packet contains an introduction to the process, page asking important initial questions of the applicant, a description of the certificate of occupancy permit process, an acknowledgement form for the applicant to acknowledge that they have read the information provided, I was working with counsel a couple of months ago, certificate of occupancy permit application, fire and life safety inspection registration form, certificate of occupancy inspection information, backflow device inspection and registration information, and business emergency contact information. Certificate of occupancy. A complete-
Never mind, I'll wait a second.
Okay. Complete certificate of occupancy permit application is submitted along with required fees. Staff researches the zoning for the address given and the most appropriate use per the zoning code based upon the intended use of space provided by the applicant. If staff is not able to match the intended use of space with the use listed in the zoning code, they'll contact the applicant, talk with them to get a more clear understanding of the intended use of space, determine if there may be an applicable use. At this point, one of the following will be determined. An applicable use exists in the zoning code, and the applicant may move forward with inspections. A specific use permit is required, a zone change and variance is required, a zoning text amendment is necessary to add an applicable use to the zoning code. Once all necessary zoning actions have been taken and an applicable use is allowed, the certificate of occupancy application is sent to engineering for review. Engineering will help determine what work is needed to comply with the zoning code, such as parking lot material and screen walls. The certificate of occupancy application is sent to Bureau Veritas for scheduling the building and fire inspections. The building emergency contact form is sent to the police department. Upon passage of all inspections, the city will issue a certificate of occupancy which indicates that occupancy is allowed, safe, and may be open to the public.
Can you go back a second?
Sure.
And go back one more, please. Okay, so, an introduction to the process.
I have to go to the front, one second.
No, go ahead.
Why do we have just a certificate of occupancy permit application if we've got a non-plan review commercial application permit application?
Because there are things that they're gonna do structurally that are gonna require Veritas to be able to check off.
You could have a change of use without having to alter the physical building.
But, wouldn't that be under, just a second. Commercial miscellaneous building permit without a plan review?
Not typically, because they're gonna be submitting plans where if somebody's just moving into an existing space, and they don't necessarily have to provide a plan layout, they just need Veritas to come through and inspect the facility as is, then there's, there's no plans submitted.
Right, but that's the dog plan, go back one more.
No plan review?
Commercial miscellaneous permit, no plan review required. Why wouldn't that be the same thing as?
This is, well, we don't, we don't do a plan review on any change of occupancy, certificate of occupancy fee.
No, I know, no, I got you, I got you, there's no plan review there. And, and that's what I was saying, there's no plan review in the CO process, there's no plan review here. So, why wouldn't we just have commercial miscellaneous permit, no plan review required?
Well, I think, I'm not speaking out of turn here, I think this applies more to a existing commercial business that may need their service upgraded, or, you know, somebody run over their gas cleaner, and they gotta have a new gas gas for gas service, it's what, what I typically see.
So, it's a structural change still?
No, it's not a structural change, but it's existing, it's not a change of use.
But, if, but here, I mean, here's, if, no plan review required, if I'm moving into, if I decide I want to move into the food store downtown, and I'm all, I'm not gonna change anything in there, but, you know, HealthCo says they're gonna have, I gotta have a water fountain, and I fill a water fountain in. So, we put a water fountain in there, it's got a P and Z on it, so it's got, I gotta do a backflow check, I still need to even come do it. I can submit a permit under miscellaneous permits, I'm not changing anything in there, I'm just gonna put cabinets up and everything else, but I do have to get an inspection from a water cooler. I can go through this and get a CO at the end of the time's inspection, it'd be good.
No, this, yeah, there isn't a CO attached to this one, so.
Like, maybe, this might be an example, an existing business needs a new water heater, that wouldn't be a plan review permit, that they're gonna come get their miscellaneous permit to switch that out, but they don't need a CO application because they have a CO and their business use isn't changing.
Okay.
So, this is just for people who already have a certificate of occupancy?
Yeah, just an example for the CO would be, and I just wanna throw this out here, when Dairy Queen switched to solid, you know, it was still the same occupancy use, but they done, they done some different things in Dairy, so, we done a CO there, you know, building's sitting out there right now, you know, somebody comes in and they want to put in a, you know, they want to sell four, that's a complete change of occupancy, so we do a CO there, and then, once we go in and do our initial inspection and determine that they have to do this, 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 and this, then they may have to just have a miscellaneous non-reviable permit, or a Pittsburgh density, then they may have to have a review, so, we never know, because we don't know what, you know, what that occupancy, what those people want to do. I mean, I'm worth, I say, I'm working with some people right now on Marshall, you know, they're, you know, they've had three or four different ideas in the last week, but they don't know what they want to do.
Can I see the, going back to the CO, do you have available what that introduction to the process is? Because this is the thing we've had issues with, several businesses asking, and not understanding the CO. So, this page is the introduct, the one that says process? Is this the second bullet point or the first?
Introduction to process.
This is the introduction?
Oh, I know it was adopted.
That was what we worked with with council. Yes, ma'am.
I got it, wait a minute. Is there a standard fee for this certificate of occupancy? Just one fee regardless?
Yes.
What is it?
It's new because we've added the fire to it, and we collect that on the front end, I think it's two sixty, $260.95.
Two sixty and ninety-five, and then it means everything, just one fee regardless?
And that also, that also includes re-inspections, if they don't pass the first time, we're gonna charge them back.
What does this fire and life safety inspection registration assessment be?
That's related to fire inspection.
Oh, you manually have to go through one?
Of course, yeah.
The, on the zone?
Yes, ma'am.
I know it's a catch 22 when they are filling out the fee, and staff researches zoning, so, I know a lot, I know most of that is on the permittee, because they're coming in and they're saying, hey, here's my permit, I want to do this, and they research zoning. And I know that because I've been stepping in before. How often does it happen that we lose somebody or lose a permit because of zoning, or, doesn't it ever happen, or?
It happens.
Do we ever check, do we ever check, when somebody's saying, hey, did you pick up a permit, and we say, what do you think about building, can we check the zoning for that real quick, before you even start?
Before they put any money in?
Well, I mean, they're not gonna put it in.
Well, yeah, but that's what they know, that you need a business.
Yeah, I just, I'm just wondering.
Most times, I mean, you know, an option's there, or at least two options.
Oh, I, I understand the options are there, but I also understand that it takes, it takes time, and, and time is money. And I've been in, I've been in this situation before where we've come in and do the permit, and all of a sudden, next thing you know, we've paid up fee, we're worried about permits, so I say, hey, guess what, here, you gotta change the zoning, and then we're sitting, we're trying to get, change the zoning, and we finally get it done, but we lost six months of that building in the winter, and kind of throws everything off. Um, I'm not using any examples around here, I'm just saying, that's just one of my things, is for anything we can, I know it's hard, I know it's a catch 22, it's with the city and the permittee, but, I don't, I don't know if we'll start to-
Well, and as soon as a permit like that comes in, there might be a question, it's either, it comes through the I and B also, to verify, so, we're checking zoning in addition to city staff checking, to make sure that this, this use complies with what they're, what they're intending to do with, so.
Right.
Are you gonna ask them on the front end, for any sort of, applications that filed?
Well, I mean, in, in the real life, you've got, you get your plans, you get your drawings, you get your architect, your architect's drawing up everything, even if you've got a, even if you've got a small, to finish out there, you've got your architect, and everybody's coming, you put your plans together, you're gonna come submit your plans for review and the permit process, and so, here you come, and everything's ready to go, and you already got a bunch of soft costs, you're looking- to go, and you already got a bunch of soft costs, you look at the property, you've bought the property, and the next thing you know, you're dropping everything down, and it's, hey, just keep these open.
If you're talking about a larger project, and they typically come in, they'll have multiple meetings, so...
Correct, multiple. Correct.
Yeah, we'll have a kickoff meeting, because a lot of those that come in with a new building or something like that, need to have site plan approved by P and Z first, so...
Right.
And at that time of P and Z, the site plan, we've already back-checked the zoning for what it is, so...
Right. You get your development contractor, your three-way contractor, whatever else in place.
Yeah, so they're coming through the bigger process you're talking about, ends up going through P and Z before it even gets to the permit, so...
Kind of like what's coming to y'all next Tuesday, the eighteenth, is a new PD revising an old PD to give her a multifamily and two family to go to strictly single family, then all the developed. So it's... Those opportunities come through, and, you know, if it meets the straight zoning, then it'll curb that, if it's something that they want to do that's a little different, you know, if they're going to ask for variance, and they're going to ask for PD, you know, we'll work through the process. It all depends on the situation.
And they could... Well, the Sylker property over here on from Dow Street, they came in for a... They wanted to plat it in two different lines, so they had... There's only ten feet between the buildings, and it's required ten yards, about ten foot setback on both lines. So they came in and put... They got a variance, and then they put the plot line right in between. Now, I guess next week at the P and Z, now they want its own one residential and one commercial. So now they're changing the zoning, we've got a little lot of steps now, so that's going to require a screening between those buildings now, in that little ten feet. So, I mean, there are catch 22s, like I said, there's catch 22s on other places. If we can get them to explain to us what their long-term intent is, we can get all the zoning and the variance to P and Z and through the council at one time, but if it's these, they're at risk, they're at risk of doing, you know, just that kind of... So, Mr. Sylker's dealing with him now, but variance to a screen more, because he wants to change the zoning, and that becomes an issue.
Can I ask on the timing? So I'm seeing the process, and then I'm reconciling that to the inspection information. It says completed certificate of occupancy application, I see that on number one in the process, pay the fee. Then it says the application is reviewed by staff to determine appropriate zoning. So, there is no timing on the process that matches over here to return the application to city and pay the fee. So between two and three over here, there's no timing. So how long does it take the city to approve the application for them to then request their inspection?
It would depend on if they have to go through the P and Z, right, if they're not zoned correctly, or they may have to go through a P and Z and a council meeting, so it all depends, it's individual.
It's not going to sit well and say depends. So here's what I'm asking, guys, I think we need to be a little bit more specific to say something about that step between return application and post-approved permit, because number two, and I don't know if it's right or wrong, all I'm saying is that's where I'm hearing the breaks. So we've got to be able to say something about reasonableness, and even to say, listen, you've got to watch X, Y, and Z, there's got to be something that gives them an explanation of if you have such and such, or if you have this, this will make it go along, we've got to put something in there to explain time, because you've got a gap. This one makes it look like it just trucks right along, and 24 hours later, I can call Bureau Veritas, and it's like, oh no, that doesn't happen. So, yeah, and application, that went fine, inspections take place, city engineers may need contact to discuss site approvals. Now, this process though, number five, isn't that what you just said though, before application is... So applications reviewed by staff, applications submitted to engineers, and Bureau Veritas for scheduling inspections, but you don't actually schedule the inspection until after you get the approved permit?
I'm going to try and explain it to you.
Okay, so this is out of step? Well, that's what I'm reading to you. Applications reviewed by staff, reviewed by city engineer, Bureau Veritas, for scheduling of inspections. Is that not the same as request a certificate of occupancy inspection?
Well, I don't know.
Okay. It's just this one over here kind of makes it all nice, one, two, three, four, five, and they're all set.
F I G?
This one is the process.
F I G?
Yeah, I'm looking at the inspection information steps, which look nice and concise, but I'm not reconciling them to the process. And I think the process is where we need that interjection about, these are the things we're having to review for. If you have issues with them, it will take longer. And I think folks need to understand that, though. Once approved, then returned to state hall. Yeah, because here you had go ahead and call, which sounds really nice.
Could you read that again to the...
Which one?
Number five, I guess, is where the...
Okay, so on the process, it says... Okay, so number two was the application gets reviewed by staff, then number three, application is submitted to city engineers and Bureau Veritas for scheduling of inspections.
I wonder if that, the lead behind that is so they have it when inspection is called? Is that what they need?
I mean, we went through this council a couple of months ago.
It might just be a matter of...
And then four says it will take place. Well, it actually will take place after you call it in, is what I think I read in here.
Okay, we'll do it for Veritas.
And then, once approved, those are returned to city staff, they will be produced, which have space or building over there. Yeah, I can't reconcile this totally, because of... Is... Oh, and this fire and life safety inspection registration, does that form within the process? I don't see it called out.
Oh, no, because it had after...
Okay.
After council.
Yeah.
Went through the CO.
Okay. If the name of the sheet is fire and life safety inspection registration, I guess I'd want to see it in the process, and then go, oh, yes, there it is, go do it. Same thing with the occupancy.
All right, is this slide here, this slide here, between two and three, that fills that gap, that's about that gap that you might be having, if you get to the point, if you applied your CO.
Oh, if it's not intend to match?
If it's not, then you go one, two, three, four.
Yeah, and all I'd say is, if this is my process, this is what I'd much rather go to, I would just, yeah, put that over here.
This slide fills that gap that you're talking about?
Yep. And then it's all there, it's nice and tidy. And I'm going to ask a question that seems sort of self-evident. Does anybody who's getting a certificate of occupancy understand what they are and why they're asking?
Does anyone open their doors for business? They want to...
I know, and I love the straightforward response. My question is, the person who has to go fill that out, do they understand that?
I mean, I've had people calling and ask me, what is this? And I've had some people call me and say, you know, well, we know we have to have this, so...
And that's all I'm doing, is I'm trying to state the obvious on here, because we're assuming people understand. I've only had to go through it once, and I didn't know what the hell it was. I just went, okay, just tell me what to fill out. You said exactly what it was, can we not say why? You can't open your business without one.
I've got it right here.
Can you...
Life safety, warning, personal statement of...
You have to have them for a house, too, a new construction.
A CO for a home, yes.
I'll bet you homeowners are like, what? What? So they never even know?
Yeah, the builder pulls it before the resident...
So they should never come up.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, if you are ordering in Stone Hollow, they've already pulled the CO before they...
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, on new construction.
You would hope the homeowner never has to know about that, because they're going to come back and go, the city didn't...
And they don't. We do finals, builders, and the mortgage company do COs, and closing, and the homeowner doesn't even go right over to the contractor.
It's that transparent?
And then, when you move into an existing house, as long as the use hasn't changed, the whole business, there is no CO required at that point, so that's why you don't...
It was so invisible, I never even knew it was...
Yeah.
When you need to get... And then adding the last names.
Mayor, I guess we'll run it over to the...
In the case that's allowed, so you can open your homework for the law.
All right. Item number three, discussion regarding an agenda request from Lee Thomas regarding the procedure for processing complaints.
Mike, where are we?
We should be in the three. You just read number four.
Number three.
I think you just read number four instead of number three.
No, no, number three.
Number three, sir.
Well, that's...
Okay.
All right, well, maybe I'm looking at a draft that's incorrect. All right. Okay, item number three, your presentation to cover general training slash orientation, including employee employment laws, open meetings, and executive sessions, plating and zoning, and involvement in citation, citations plural slash citation procedure in court.
Thank you, Mayor. We have two PowerPoints. This is Melissa Kramer from my office, she's a 15-plus-year attorney who is an employment law specialist, and then focuses with that, you know, on governmental entities and public employers. So she's going to go over some basics with you, just to help you all get an understanding, and then I'm going to go through the other topics that you all voted on at the last meeting to have covered.
Can you all hear me? If I sit right here, I'm happy to come into the well, if that's better.
Yes, ma'am.
You good? Okay, all right. If I start mumbling, y'all throw a piece of paper or pencil jumping at me. As enthralled as permit processes are to the employment lawyer, I am a little bit relieved to move on. So, I thank you guys for letting me come and speak with you today. Listen, I think y'all were so smart to ask for this. So many of the governmental entities that I have worked with over the course of my career don't actually understand that they're employers, once you take that elected official seat. And so I think just educating yourself a little bit on the alphabet soup of what are employment laws in both the state and at the federal level, I think will help future discussions, hopefully, and if you have to be involved in an employment matter, it'll just give you some background to know where you're starting. So, I'm going to move on. So here are some of the statutes that we're going to be talking a little bit about today. This is, like I said, it's an alphabet soup, you're going to see a lot of abbreviations and acronyms for some of these. A lot of them are so familiar to us that they're in sort of our common lingo, you've probably heard of things like the ADA and the Family Medical Leave Act, the acronym for that is FMLA. You may not have heard of things like the Equal Pay Act, Fair Credit Reporting Act, or Texas Commission on Human Rights Act, and we'll move to the next one. There are some additional laws that are specific to the state of Texas that are found in the Texas Labor Code. The Texas Government Code applies specifically to municipal entities and requires you to give a written complaint for a police officer or fire officer who's being terminated, and we'll talk some more in detail on these. Texas has its own Pregnancy Discrimination Act, which is a little bit unusual, we don't have a lot of employment acts here in Texas, but that's one we do have. And then the Texas Healthcare Privacy Act, which covers protected healthcare information and the manner in which it's preserved and handled within an entity. This list isn't exhaustive, there's lots of other laws that may apply to a city in various contexts. Sometimes even ordinances can be construed as an employment contract, particularly if it's an ordinance which adopts a policy. So those can be combined with any of the federal or state laws to create an employment, situation or employment contract for the city. Move on. Texas is fortunately an at-will employment state, which basically means that unless you have a contract employment, you have someone who has a specific agreement, then they can be terminated by the employee at will, which means they can be terminated if they have cause, if it's bad cause, or no cause at all. You don't have a term of employment, you can just show up each day, and it also means the employees re-quit and walk away whenever they get tired of the employment. Some restrictions to terminate the employment include, basically, any illegal reason. You can't terminate someone for a discriminatory reason, in retaliation for filing a claim or asserting rights of discrimination, or some other protected activity. You can't terminate someone for a refusal to perform an illegal act. Move on to the next. At-will employment also includes if you have a written contract, for instance, the city has a written contract for its city manager, that's pretty typical for most cities that I've worked with. As we were talking about earlier, your precedent matters. If you have a particular process or procedure or standard, those can be inferred to create liability if you don't follow them into the future. That's particularly true if you have written policies or practices. There's a very recent case that we are watching very closely as it goes through the Court of Appeals, I've got it cited down there, the City of Denton versus Rushing, and that is a Fort Worth Court of Appeals case that actually created an employment contract in combination with an ordinance, and that is being appealed to the Texas Supreme Court. I'm not sure what the briefing schedule is, but they were working on a petition for review. So we'll kind of keep you in the loop and let you know the outcome of that. Denton builds on a former case for the City of Houston versus Williams that involved firefighters, ordinance that was fired... Houston has, they have collective bargaining for their firefighters, and so the courts in that instance found that because they were already a collective bargaining city, had a collective bargaining agreement, the ordinance, along with some of the terms of the contract, created a unilateral employment contract, and when the city changed the ordinance, the court found them to be in breach of the contract. So it's sort of esoteric and highly technical stuff, but it's something that we watch really closely on the employment side. Thank you, Mary. Here's one of the big ones to watch for and to be familiar with as far as the acronyms go. Fair Labor and Standards Act, it's a national policy for minimum wage and overtime payments for covered employers and employees, and you guys are a covered employer, cities are a covered employer. And the FLSA provides that there's a federal minimum wage, 725 an hour, that has not been increased since 2009. And for non-exempt employees, that means for time that they spend working over 40 hours per week, they should be paid, this is sort of the basic rule, there's lots of exceptions to this, but they should be paid at one and a half times their regular rate of pay. So if someone's earning $10 an hour and they're working more than 40 hours a week, they should be getting $15 an hour for those hours that they work over 40. Doesn't apply to the whole 40, just those hours that they work in excess of that. If there's... Texas doesn't have its own minimum wage law, but a union agreement has greater protection for pay to the employee. Firefighters have some exceptions in terms of how pay is calculated, depending upon the shifts that they work, and how many hours they are craning into a week, because a lot of departments have 24-hour shifts. And then, regulations, this is kind of a weird, we're in a sort of an odd posture on this. The regulations that were proposed under President Obama to adjust a salary test to exempt employees from overtime are still pending, but they've not been adopted. And Judge Mazat here in Texas in the Eastern District actually issued the injunction, and the injunction was upheld by the Fifth Circuit, saying that the regulatory agency had overreached its authority. That's being appealed up to the Supreme Court, but now we don't really know where that's going to go, but as of right now, there's no change to what the statute has been for quite some time with regard to how folks are classified as exempt or non-exempt. Exempt or non-exempt status is the most litigable. Exempt or non-exempt status is the most litigated issue in federal courts under this act. Who gets to have overtime and who doesn't? The previous presidential administration was encouraging and wanting to move more people into that overtime basket. This current administration hasn't really taken a position on that. But it's very policy-driven as far as who gets to be exempt and non-exempt. And there's some complicated and technical analysis on that that usually cuts down to the job description, also the employee's independence with regard to their work function. The FLSA has 30 separate exemptions for minimum wage. I'm surprised it's honestly that low. I would think that if you combine a couple of things, it'd be a lot higher. And it's very technical, so we can discuss it if you guys have questions. But my answer is if you have doubts, you probably need to be talking to an employment lawyer as to how to calculate that overtime because it is so technical. It's very factually specific to bring a case under the FLSA. It does have a two-year and up to a three-year statute of limitation. The big bite on the FLSA is not necessarily the overtime, it's the attorney fees. The plaintiff in the case can pursue attorney fees. And so even if they get nominal damages for overtime, their attorney may be able to collect and recoup all the attorney fees. And so that's kind of the big hammer to that statute. And move on. Oh, sorry, thank you. The next one. And the national policy on, oh wait, I think you went back. Sorry. There you go. So here's how you determine if someone is exempt or non-exempt. There's two tests. One is the duties test. The employee has to exercise independent judgment. That's what we were talking about earlier. And then the salary test, it's currently 23,600. You have to earn at least that amount in order to be considered exempt. Highly compensated employees are, must earn at least $100,000 a year to be exempt. And the proposed final rule that's pending is raising those limits to 47 and 134 respectively. And so you can see, if those actually get passed, it's going to push a lot more people into that exempt, excuse me, that non-exempt classification. And employers can incur a great deal more overtime in order to meet those regulations. Penalties for violating the FLSA, there's unpaid minimum wages and overtime. Additionally, you have a liquidated damages clause, which allows you to double the overtime that was unpaid. If you have good faith and reasonable grounds to believe that the FLSA was not being violated, the court could set aside the liquid damage award. For instance, if you mistakenly misclassified an employee as exempt to, excuse me, as an exempt employee, you should have been a non-exempt. A lot of times it's hard to prove a good faith, or excuse me, it's hard to prove a bad faith argument in that instance. Most people don't have a bad faith argument with classification. Where you see that come into play a lot, though, is when you're talking about a large group of employees. For instance, say you had all of your sanitation workers as non-exempt folks. That one might be an issue where you would want to really look at those job descriptions and study it so you can avoid any bad faith analysis. Employers are presumed to know the law. You get a two-year limitations and then bump it up to three years if there's that willful, and that goes back to your good faith, bad faith analysis, willful violation there. And I know I'm talking fast, so y'all wave a flag if you want me to slow down. Family Medical Leave Act, this. Yes, ma'am.
You were going so fast back when you entered the fire department and the hours that they worked.
Yes, ma'am.
Is that also applied to the police department?
No, it does not. No, it does.
Only the fire.
Only the fire. It's a federal regulation. It's called 728, excuse me, 7K exemption. And Texas actually has an exemption for their police officers. And, but you have to be, it has a population density number that's tied to it. I believe you have to be over 10,000 in order to qualify for the exemption under your U.S. Census figures. So, and I'm not sure where Van Alstine hits on that number. So I don't think you guys would qualify for that.
We're not even one.
Yeah.
But that is a police and EMT, it would be populated.
It would just be police, not EMT. EMT does not have a specific exemption, but most of the time they fall under that seven, what's called the 7K exemption, which is in the FLSA Act. And it is controlled by how often you're working a lot of larger departments. For instance, they work a 24-hour shift with firefighters. So you work 24 hours on and two days off. And so the way you calculate your overtime there for a paid period, for a two-week paid period, is measured under that 7K exemption. So you basically get, because they're presumed to have had some downtime within that 24 hours, they get kind of a bonus of hours before you have to start paying the overtime. That's, and it's incentive that the firefighters like because a lot of them like to work those 24-hour shifts because then they can, you know, take care of their kids or have another business, something like that. That gives them some flexibility.
Thank you.
Sure. So Family Medical Leave Act, that's one we're, most people are at this point pretty familiar with because it's been around and it's been a really successful act. Workers, if you have more than 50 employees, so I don't think this actually applies to Van Alstine either, you get up to 12 weeks of leave if you've worked 1,250 hours during the last 12 months. And it's a rolling 12-month period. If you live within 75 miles of at least 50 people working, again, that's an exemption that's not going to apply to Van Alstine. And you can qualify for a family leave for the birth or son of a daughter, replacement of a child with an employee, for adoption or foster care, and exigencies relating to a family member who is on active military duty. You can actually get up to 26 weeks of leave if you have someone who's on active duty in order to care for a child, relative, something like that. Qualified medical leave to care for is a serious health condition. You can care for a son, daughter, spouse, or parent. And there's been a little bit of development on who is a parent in the last couple of years. And essentially, it's any adult who's standing, they call it in loco parentis, in the shoes of the parent, like an aunt, a grandparent, or a stepparent. And it's intended to give a lot of flexibility to those family units. That might not be traditional family units, but you still need to be able to take care of your family member. The employee herself or himself is, if the employee's unable to perform the functions of the job, you can take FML or only. Next, a kin, if the kin, if the relative is in the armed services. And the employer can require documentation of the condition that is the basis of their request. So for instance, if the employee was to have a baby and wanted to take 12 weeks of leave, the employer could say, we're going to need a doctor note saying that you're qualified for 12 weeks of leave. And that process is pretty standard through most of the folks that, most of the entities that I work with that do qualify for FML now. And act provides up to 12 weeks of leave. One of the.
You are exempt for this, right?
You are exempt for this, so we'll kind of move through it. But just so you know, because this is actually one of the most common questions that employers get because employees don't necessarily understand if a small city is exempt from it. They think that they get FML. So I think sometimes it's good to know what's in the act. So you can say, hey, you know, I know you think you get 12 weeks of leave, but you don't because we don't qualify for it. One of the biggest misconceptions I think that I run into is that even under FML, even under FML, the employer is not responsible to pay for that time. It's unpaid leave. So if the employee has accrued PTO time, then they can use that typically. But the employer doesn't have any obligation to pay for the leave. Keep going. And there's a cause of action that you can sue for. You can also get reinstatement, promotion, or other equitable way to relieve a train fees and court costs. And you can also sue for retaliation or interference. Discrimination harassment. So there's three main types of conduct that the other statutes, Title VII and the Pregnancy Discrimination Act, Equal Pay Act, those things seek to prohibit. Discrimination, harassment, and retaliation. Those are sort of your umbrella categories of conduct that the statutes are seeking to prohibit. Discrimination, it's generally unlawful to refuse to hire or fire or treat someone differently in compensation or work conditions based upon a protected classification. So what the statutes refer to, and you'll probably hear me talk about some, is a protected characteristic. So those things can be things like race, color, national origin, gender, disability, age, religion, and honestly, the topics or the categories keep piling up, especially when you get into subcategories of any of those topics. And then there's two types of discriminatory conduct. One is called disparate treatment, which means you're actually treating someone in an unequal manner. Another one is disparate impact, which means you have a policy that creates a disparity. And one of the examples that I always use that applied most to cities that is fortunately in the past, but is your housing ordinances. A lot of housing ordinances used to have restrictions as to who could live in certain neighborhoods and that sort of thing. And they were on their face neutral, but they had a discriminatory impact as to who could live there would discriminate based upon religion or race. And so those have been thrown out and found to have discriminatory intent.
So let me ask on that one, because most of us state for residential that they're single families, so on and so forth. So is still describing what or defining what a family is, is that the thing that needs to be removed? Or you're still allowed to sit there and say it's.
What is a single family?
What is a family?
You know, I think you still have a little bit of latitude. And I would certainly defer to Julie and some of the other attorneys in our office who are more familiar with the housing ordinances. But you have a little bit of latitude to zone for the number of people who can live in a residence and that sort of thing. And I think that's more the way the trend in regulation has been going is you're actually zoning for numbers in a residence versus familial relationships. So that's really.
I just happen to know Sherman is a familial one. It says so many, a blood relation. And I'm like, are you allowed to do that?
A lot of zoning ordinances say that. The Texas state laws have, I think, 10 different definitions of different types of homes based on whether they're for to care for elderly or some type of disability or what have you, where despite your family definition, you can't violate or enforce something that goes against all those different zoning categories in the state law. Van Alstine has been questioned a few times by folks inquiring, but it's always kind of stood up in the end. But there hasn't. There hasn't been a change of definition in a while. Let me see.
Because I know they now insert the bare housing stuff on top of it and sort of overlays. But I didn't know if we can't use that to get around the fact that you need to redo your definition.
I've seen one case where your housing ordinances were wrapped into an employment discrimination lawsuit. It was a disparate impact lawsuit regarding workforce housing. It's kind of a weird case. And it ended up, you know, it ended up with a strange finding, a strange opinion. I think it ultimately settled because nobody was quite sure how to unwrap that and work it all out.
We've got, I've got the definition here. If you want, we can talk about that a little bit.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine. Because I ended up going over into the other. Yeah. So one of the ways you can defend against a discrimination lawsuit is to claim that whatever discipline or termination adverse employment action was the result of a discriminatory business reason. For instance, this is just a hypothetical, not based on any current ongoing issue here. But if you have an employee who has a known disability and the employee is repeatedly late for work, the employee may be disciplined or terminated for tardiness. That's a sort of what we would call content neutral reason that you've got to have your employees present in your workplace at the beginning of the day versus discriminating as to their disability. But that's actually an area that gets litigated quite a bit as to was it a legitimate business reason or was it a discriminatory reason? Harassment. Harassment is prohibited conduct that's distinct from hiring or firing decisions. So this is typically after the employee's already been hired and before they're fired. And there's two types of harassment. One is quid pro quo sexual harassment, and that's the type of harassment where you have an exchange of favors, where you have someone that says, I'll give you a bonus if you will go out on a date with me, or I will do this for you in exchange for. Hostile work environment has to be based upon a protected characteristic. And it's actually, hostile work environment is one of the hardest discriminatory causes of action to survive summary judgment on. It's an incredibly tough standard under the Courts of Appeal, particularly in the Fifth Circuit. But the conduct has to be, the standard is severe and pervasive to a reasonable person. And standalone incidents do not, cannot create a hostile work environment. So you typically have to have a pattern of conduct that would create a hostile work environment, and it has to be so severe. And what I mean severe, the courts have found it must be very severe. Things like showing nudity doesn't necessarily meet the standard. Using an off-color remark doesn't meet the standard. It must be repeated and severe conduct to the extent that someone, there's just, you can't believe anybody can stand.
Well, those were sexual harassment points you gave. What is an example of hostile?
Harass, hostile work environment has to be based on a protected characteristic. So if you're harassing somebody on the basis of their race, it's the same standard. It has to be severe and pervasive. And quid pro quo is nearly always sexual harassment. But you can't have something that is not severe and pervasive under a hostile work environment. So keep moving. Retaliation. So retaliation is when an employer takes an adverse action. And adverse action is involved because that's one of the litigated topics as to what is an adverse employment action against a covered individual. Again, something that typically gets litigated because he or she engaged in protected activity. And a covered individual is somebody who opposes unlawful practices, participates in a proceeding. For instance, they might file a grievance or requested accommodations related to employment discrimination based upon, again, the protected, must be based upon a protected characteristics. So based upon race, color, sex, religion, national origin, age, or disability. Grievance is filed against somebody because they are rude, you don't like them, they were mean to you. That's not protected activity under the statute. Protected activity includes alleged discrimination that is, again, based upon one of those immutable characteristics to someone. Protected populations, this is one of the things that the EOC has really focused on in the last probably five to 10 years, is they're really wanting to target what they call vulnerable populations. What the EOC is focusing on of vulnerable populations are workers over the age of 40 and people who may have an unknown immigration status. They consider those folks to be vulnerable populations, and they may try and tuck them under a Title VII or an ADEA cause of action. And for a while, they were being very aggressive about those. I've seen them slow down considerably under both Title VII and ADEA prosecutions. I think they, from a practical standpoint, the EOC here in Texas went to electronic filing, and I think they've just been overwhelmed. I think that there's been a deluge of electronic complaints. Before, you had to actually go into their offices and physically sit down and handwrite out, fill out your complaint. I think the electronic filing process has changed that. And I think we're seeing the results of that being less physical, just on a volume basis. So in Texas, Texas is what we call a joint filing state with our, it's called the TECPRA Act, which is the Texas Commission on Human Rights Act. And you have up to 300 days in Texas to file a complaint from the date of the event. So for instance, if you have an employee who was terminated and they believe it was for a discriminatory reason under Title VII, then they can take up to 300 days to file a complaint with the EOC before they move forward with their lawsuit. Now, in Texas, you have to file an EOC or a state-level complaint in order to get what we call a right-to-sue letter and actually bring your lawsuit. Otherwise, your lawsuit is abated until you get that right-to-sue letter. The ADEA is another act that is a discrimination act, and it prohibits discrimination against employees over the age of 40. Some professions like law enforcement or fire protection are subject to what? It's a test called the Botified Occupational Qualifications Test, which can exempt an employer for those, I typically deem as safety-sensitive positions, positions for which you would have to have some sort of physical ability to be able to perform the job, and it's also safety-sensitive. And the ADA is the act which prohibits discrimination against disabled people what's regarded as a disability, a person with a physical or mental impairment that substantially limits one or more major life activity. A person who has a history or record of such an impairment and a person who is perceived by others as having such an impairment. You may have heard several years ago, there was a revision to the ADA, and they really expanded the definition of what is considered to be a disability now under the act. And you only. And you only have to have 15 employees to be covered under the ADA as an employer. So I think you guys meet that threshold. Physical or mental impairment, you know, that substantially limits one or more major life activity. Thinking and breathing are considered to be a major life activity. One thing that is actually not covered is eyesight, because they didn't want to regulate airline pilots in that way and exempt them from that disability category. So eyesight is not considered a major life activity in the same way that things like hypertension, diabetes, those are all covered conditions now. A qualified individual with a disability meets the fundamental qualifications of the job and can perform the job with or without reasonable qualifications, excuse me, accommodations. So when someone is calling me, when an employer calls me and says, "We have someone who's telling us that they have a disability and they need an accommodation." So the first thing I say is, "Well, what's your job description say are your essential functions of your position? And let's get out your job description and look and see really what's their job about? What do they have to do on a day-to-day basis? And can they do those tasks with or without an accommodation?" For instance, if you had an emergency dispatcher who had a severe hearing impairment, is there some sort of modification that can be made to your software to allow them to perform that job? And there may or may not be, but let's assume that there isn't. What we have to do from that point, the employer, the employee has come to us and said, "I want this accommodation. I had this accident, or I have this condition that's developed, and I'm going deaf, and I want to stay in my job as a dispatcher." So the employee, we as the employer then have an obligation to say, "Okay, we're going to engage in what they call the interactive process, and you're going to tell me, and with the assistance of your physician, what accommodations do you need to do this job? What kind of things, you know, how severe is your disability? Is there a tweak or a modification? Can we get you noise amplifying headphones that would allow you to do the job?" And again, I'm just speaking hypotheticals, not in any real life situation, it's covered by an Austin. The accommodations might have to do with making facilities accessible, providing modifying equipment, flexible scheduling, and up until the point where you get to an undue hardship to the employer, you have a duty to accommodate. So in the instance that we just gave you, what might be an undue hardship is you said, "You need all new software. The software is very expensive, and you're a small part. So you have to balance those interests and figure out if it was not really an undue hardship." The best way to defend against those is really having a cooperative discussion and also doctrine as you go along the way. USARA is the Military Protection Act. It protects civilian job rights and benefits for veterans and members of the active and reserve components of the U.S. Armed Forces. What I typically say about this act, and it's a little bit of a joke, but I think it's pretty accurate, is in a tie, the tie goes to the employee. USARA is very protective of our service members as well as should be, and it essentially preserves their job rights for the time that they are in active service, and then it has some cushion on each side of it in terms of training opportunities that they might get to go do drills if they're in the National Guard, and then when they are actually returned from active service, how long until they have to come back if they're on a long deployment. There's some notification requirements in it. If, let's presume you have somebody who's gone to Afghanistan for two years, well, when they come back, they're entitled to their position, they're also entitled to any pay raises or seniority pay raises that they were, senior rankings that they would have gotten, such as rate of vacation accrual, health insurance, and if it's anything like that, that they would have gotten as if they had remained in their working position.
Is that applied to everybody? Are there any size?
Not, not when you're over the size. I think it's, again, I think it's like 15. It's really small on that one. And I haven't looked it up in law. I can get you that specific number, but I think generally speaking, that one's a small employer effective, too.
And they are reinstated with their health insurance with an no waiting period for all insurance companies?
Yes, ma'am. And actually, actually now under most of-
Is that a state law, I guess?
Well, it's actually a federal law, but most insurance companies now don't have much of a waiting period anymore. I think the max is 60 days. But that's a great question. For a USARA employee, that would be automatically reinstated, but that would also be, insurance companies know that. All you have to do is inform that this is a USARA employee, they have to get automatically reinstated. And they can actually keep their health insurance benefits while they're on leave. They have to pay for them themselves. I've never seen anybody do that because the military's benefits are so covering. So, and there's so much, you know, financially, it's better for the service member to take that.
But they have family and money to keep it.
Yes, they could.
As if they were important.
Right, they could do that. They would just have to pay whatever that employee share would be.
And then when they came back, it would be covered?
Right, 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 comparative to what any other city employee would be. So that's, that's pretty much your highlights. That was a quick run through of a lot of different laws. I know we have some executive session items coming up, and so one of the things I'll visit with you about in executive session is maybe how some more specific hypotheticals under those laws could apply to the council, the city individually. But if you have some general questions about the laws themselves, I'd be more than happy to visit about that.
How does the city keep records? Frank, this is probably your question. How do you stay up on this?
Well, I believe, and there's updates that come out, and TML sends them out, TML also. Julie's office stays current on federal laws, so we're getting from multiple sources.
Okay, so they are advising-
We'll vet it back. And there's updates coming out, and it's overall.
Does it look like our employee handbook is like, like 2009, I think was the last or second?
Yeah, and, you know, I'll speak to that and say, that's actually not that unusual. I mean, employee handbooks typically are written for the long haul, so I review policies on the time that are 10, 15 years old. You know, and certainly with regard to the city, I've looked at the core, I've looked at the whole handbook in detail, but I've looked at the core policies, and those are still legally enforceable. So I, you know, I think to the extent that a review is needed, and it's good idea to do a review, not discuss how often, yeah.
Is it prudent to do that?
To do one? You know, really, I think what I would recommend is, yeah, is you probably do want to review your policies as a whole every five to six years, but it's certainly once a decade, but you really want to look at them for efficiency, and are they working and flexible for your organization? For instance, a lot of times policies have job description references, you know, titles that have changed or organization structure that's no longer working or no longer present. There's, that's usually the sorts of things that get changed rather than overhauling it. Because the federal laws, while they do change, you may have to change an individual policy, you know, so often, you're not going to do a full rewrite of your federal employment laws enough to affect it every 10 years.
Yeah, and then, and I noticed that the fire and police, their policies are a lot more detailed than the general one was. So I didn't know if there were, you know, things that would be specific here and not covered here. Do they mesh or not?
Yeah, I think that's something that's worth having a conversation about and reviewing. I'm familiar with some of them, and they do mesh. Some of them are more detailed because they have more specific functions. You know, I know one of the things that is a little bit different is the, is the time that an employee has to respond to a complaint, you know, with regard to regular grievance versus police agreements. My understanding is that those are adopted, though, in part from the best practices, standards that the police-
Yeah, it looked like the association's probably really, really current.
Yeah, and those get, those are coming to national standards.
I wondered whether they were too broad and, like, matched.
Yeah, I think it's a-
It seemed like they haven't had to.
Yeah, it's a, well, I think it's a good idea to have that, have that conversation and look at those, but I think you actually do want your city policies to be more broad than your department policies. That's my general recognition, because you're applying it to lots of different types of employers.
Right.
Shall we move on? All right. We can just, we can go to the next slide. I'm going to go quickly through the open meetings act part. I know there is an hour-long, you know, AG video that you get to watch to get your certificate. I have a PowerPoint that qualifies where you could get your certificate and not have to watch the video, but that's an hour long, because the AG has to prove it. So this, I'm not going to talk for an hour, let alone an hour, about the openings act, but TOMA is typically the acronym for the Texas Open Meetings Act. You know, a forum of a governmental body are going to discuss the public business. There has to be an agenda posted so that the public has notice. You can't have a meeting without having at least a forum present, and then the act does define what deliberate or discuss means, and that's, you know, receiving information, giving information, asking questions, having discussion, or, you know, third parties questioning you or giving you information. The governmental body, which is the defined term that the act applies to, it applies to the city council, it applies to other groups that may have rulemaking or quasi-judicial power. And so whether or not it applies to any of your boards depends on the authority that your ordinances give to those boards. So the answer may not be the same for every city as to whether their PZ has to post an agenda or not. If most of their power is stripped away and the council is the final authority for everything, maybe not. Some cities give final plat approval to their PZ, so it's not taking up space on the council agenda. But, you know, a best practice is obviously to post so the public can have the information of who's meeting and when and where.
So is our PZ advisory or no?
They are.
I've heard them referred to as advisory before.
Yeah, they don't have final authority for plats here, but their agendas are still posted.
Yeah, no, I think it's still a good practice, but they are advisory then.
All of our committees and boards except for the city council is advisory.
Are they advisory?
Well, state law does require EDC and CDC to-
Yeah, they are separate.
Post agendas, but otherwise, you're going to, you have to do a separate analysis for each board to determine whether the act's going to apply. So obviously, if a forum's going to get together, you have to post an agenda. A meeting can be held by telephone, which telephone means only audio, there's no video, only if there's an emergency or it's an advisory board. If you're having a video conference call, then you can establish a forum with a video, and we're going to talk a little bit about that in more detail coming up. But usually, the biggest question I get is, when do we not have to have an agenda? And so this is a list of examples of what's excluded, you know, social gatherings, ceremonial events, press conferences, conventions, if everyone, if all of you go to a TML conference to get training, you don't have to post an agenda for that, you're not going to be taking any action in theory, you know, not discussing city business, you're going to be learning from the people who are teaching. New, this year, starting on September 1, your candidate forums or debates that are held during election season are now going to be exempt. In the past, Jennifer has posted agendas in trying to keep in compliance with the Open Meetings Act, because you may have a forum of the council there, and obviously, at an election candidate forum, it is city topics being discussed, right? And that created a difficulty for cities in to be able to have this type of, you know, open communications. And so in this legislative session that just adjourned, they added a specific exemption, which says those events no longer have to be posted. And certain electronic bulletin boards that council members can communicate on are not considered a meeting, and we'll talk about those in a little bit more detail as well. The thing to be careful of when you're at a social gathering, you know, if it's faldoral or some event where a forum of you might be present, is to, you know, not cuddle up and talk about what's on the next agenda, and be leery of the walking forum where you have one citizen that will come up and go, "Hey, on next week's agenda, there's this. How are you going to vote?" And then they go to council member number two, "Hey, I just talked to so-and-so, and this is how they're voting on this item next week. How are you voting?" They create a walking forum where it gives the impression that decisions were made before you can get to the public meeting. But it's okay to say, you know, "This is a social gathering, and I probably shouldn't have this conversation here because of open meetings, but please come to a council meeting next week." Next slide. So the agenda has to be posted 72 hours before the meeting. If a city has a website, it needs to also be on the website, and it's required to be readily available during normal business hours. The requirements of the notice is that it has to inform the public of a subject matter to be addressed in the meeting. And I'll give you an example that happened today. A city that is meeting tonight had on their agenda to appoint members to a certain board that they have. Well, they have a written policy that has term limits for that board, and so the city manager called to say they would like to talk about maybe not having the term limits anymore because they're interested in reappointing somebody whose terms are up. He said, "Well, you can't change that written policy today or talk about changing the term limits because the agenda says you're just appointing new people." And so if a citizen wanted to come speak against Mr. Smith, they know he's termed out, they're not going to bother coming to the meeting, but had there been any indication that you might waive term limits on the agenda, then they might have come and said, "No, we don't think you should waive term limits, and we don't think this person should be appointed." So the test is always, would a public, a member of the public made a different decision about attending the meeting based on the agenda, whether it has enough information or not? Can't really be a broad category. An emergency meeting is allowed with only two hours' notice instead of three hours' notice. This is the definition of what's an emergency. There's an imminent threat to public health and safety or reasonably unforeseeable situation, you can do the two-hour notice. And an example of when some of those meetings happen was when hurricane, right after Hurricane Katrina, a lot of cities appear, use city funds, so they'd eventually get reimbursed by FEMA, to open up some emergency shelters and things like that, and they had, you know, two-hour postings to just, "Okay, what, how are we going to help with this emergency relief, and what can we do? Because these people are on their way here." So that was an example.
Well, we just had one of those about a month or so ago, didn't we?
You may have had a reasonably unforeseeable situation. That was related, yes, that was related to the ballot language. It had been-
The voting.
Mm-hmm, yeah. The comptroller decided they want a clearer language, and they gave the direction since today's the last day, you can change a ballot. That's a reasonably unforeseeable situation. You're right, yeah. Okay, next. The record-keeping about meetings. For the open meeting, there has to be minutes, and it can be recorded, you know, this one's being recorded. For a closed meeting, it's not minutes, but it's a certified agenda. And then, or you can do a recording with some exceptions. So every executive session should have a certified agenda. There's a little bit of detail about what minutes must stay, the subject of the deliberations, and the vote or the decision that was taken. Minutes are not a transcript of the proceedings. They're the highlights of the official actions that were taken or the topics that were talked about. about. The minutes and recordings that you have should be available for public inspection, and copies also made available to the public. That is not true for the certified agendas. Those can only be released by court order. They're not subject to the Public Information Act.
Are our public recordings, frankly, you sent out, is that also on our road sign, the link to them?
And then, any member of the audience or the media can also record or film meetings. As the council, you have the right, doesn't link an area for people who want to film or record to be, so that there's not equipment, like between you and the rest of the audience, or that it's not destructive to the meeting. So you're allowed to have some parameters about it, but you cannot prohibit someone from recording or videoing an open meeting of the council. So action items are listed on the agenda, and you can't take action on something that is not there. Pretty basic point. Next. The public right to speak, we get questions about this every now and then. If an item is a public hearing, for example, a zoning case where property is being rezoned, the public has the right to speak and be heard. You can't prohibit them from speaking, but you can establish time limits and other reasonable parameters, and you should apply those rules to everyone equally. But for a public meeting where it is not a public hearing, the law does not give the citizens the right to be heard. It gives them the right to be present and to watch. And so whether or not to allow citizens to speak at anything other than a public meeting is a policy decision that each council for every city makes for themselves on how they want that to work in their community. All votes have to be in the public, and you cannot do a vote by secret ballot or written ballot. The public that is watching the meeting has the right to know how each individual person voted on a particular matter, rather than just the cumulative tally of the votes. Video conferencing, this is fairly new. It was just a couple of legislative sessions ago where they decided if there is audio and video communication, then somebody on the council can attend the meeting that way, and they're counted as being present for a forum. This is different than a telephone, is only allowed for emergencies in certain situations. If you have the audio feed, it is now allowed. At the bottom are, you know, the details of what's required. You have to see and hear each other. There has to be a physical place posted where people can come to the meeting. The presiding officer, whoever's gonna preside, has to be present at the meeting place. So if you ever had a meeting where the mayor wanted to Skype in, then the mayor pro temp would actually have to, if the mayor pro temp's here, you would have to let the mayor pro temp preside over that meeting if the mayor weren't physically present. Executive session, as you know, I mean, you've done this, you have, the mayor or presiding officer will announce there's gonna be a closed session, they'll announce the topic. It's always good to save the time, and then a certified agenda will be kept. Below is just a few examples of the types of things that the Act allows the closed sessions to be held for. You can't actually vote in executive session. You can, if you need to maintain your attorney-client privilege, you can give direction to the attorney, like, you know, as far as strategy in a case or something, how you want them to move forward. But if you're actually gonna have a settlement of a lawsuit, or you're voting on an agreement, then you would have a vote out in the public for something like that. Executive session, particularly attorney-client communication, things discussed in executive session really should remain in executive session. You know, even the certified agenda can't be released except by court order, so it is considered confidential. And if you are talking about something from closed session when a privilege hasn't been waived by the entire council, you could potentially be subjecting yourself to some personal liability, or that the privilege would not apply to you individually, but the rest of the council, you know, on behalf of the city, could still have the privilege, depending on the situation.
Why is that?
Well, okay, so here's an example. That was a case that my partner Andy had a number of years ago. If the governing body was involved in litigation, and they would have executive sessions for him to update them and give them legal advice about the case. And it was over an ordinance that the council had voted on. Well, that was a legislative act, voting on an ordinance, which is a law, is your legislating. And if depositions were to occur, they noticed depositions of all the council members. What you were thinking when you voted on something is covered by legislative privilege. You're not required to answer questions about what you were thinking when you voted. The vote stands for itself. Well, one council member kept walking out after a meeting and talking to the cameras, thought, well, you know, I voted against it because, dah dah dah. Well, the plaintiff's lawyer knew to get the court to order the depositions, and the court said, no, everybody is covered by legislative privilege, but not you, the one who'd been talking to the reporter, because you've been already telling people what you were thinking when you voted. So you get to go have your deposition taken. So then, all the things you say or may not say could create more liability and more exposure for the city or for yourself individually. So that's an example of where someone was talking outside of executive session, and they got treated differently from their fellow elected votes.
Yeah, hold on. Okay, so my understanding, though, on this part is that the thing about, like, the real property and even the economic development, is it's only an executive session if you're protecting the negotiation. So if you're disclosing some competitive information. So anytime you're doing economic development or real property, unless you're protecting those, you know, special pricing or something like that, that that does not have to go into an executive session. It's just to protect that privileged information of the pricing that would make them not competitive any longer. I mean, for example, when we went into executive session last time, we had, we had information that should not have been available to the public, because it was a special pricing consideration. That would go into executive session. But if you're just talking about purchasing a piece of property that you bought, and it was the same price anybody else got, you don't have to go to an executive session.
Well, the test is, I'll read you the language from the Act, that's why I pulled the book out, is would it have a detrimental effect on the position of the governmental body in negotiation?
So it's about the negotiation?
It's about negotiations. It isn't only price. Like, it could be, there could be other, lots of, you know, a purchase contract for a priest of land has a lot of terms, other than the price.
But it would have to be privileged type of information. I mean, it doesn't mean that every time you have a real property discussion, that you're always going into executive session. There has to be something in there that
Does location actually fall into that? Because when we start talking specifically about location, landowner conjecture, price, do they not really?
Yes, frequently, what you'll see on real property ones is a geographic area described that is larger than the particular parcel, so that the prices don't go up. Because a lot of people perceive the government as having unlimited funds and deep pockets that you'll learn through this budget you're about to be doing. That, you know, that's not true, right? I mean, so if it will have a detrimental effect on negotiating, and really even the decision of whether or not to negotiate, like, do we want to pursue property in that area? Just the fact of where you're looking could cause prices to rise. You really have to look at each situation and decide, does this qualify for executive session or not? With the economic development, I mean, the big thing with that is, you don't wanna post a list of companies you're talking to or trying to recruit on an agenda, because what's Anna Now and Melissa and McKinney and even Sherman gonna do when they see your list that you've worked hard to even be talking to them to try to make something happen? They're gonna talk to them too, like, oh, that company's looking to open a new business. Let me go, maybe I can offer them a little bit more and get them. So usually, they're
I understand that. I guess, you know, the synopsis and not just yours, I mean, and when I listened to the lady talk, I was picking it up more, but the PowerPoints, you know, they just put economic development. And it's like, no, the point here is about protecting, you know, I don't know the right words to use, but it is protecting those pricing negotiations.
Or, yeah, discussing whether or not to offer an incentive to someone.
Because you're dealing with the market.
Reviewing what they, information they've given you, but just, you know, what's our general plan gonna be to market the city to hopefully create economic development? That wouldn't be executive session, either economic development.
Yes, and I just wanna make sure that that's really understood, that it's not, every time we talk about EDC, we have to go into executive session. That's not what this is about.
And somebody's gotta advertise too, if they're working that infrastructure around that area, and it has a big draw for someone else, probably coming in and studying.
Yeah. And the other one was... Oh, so tell me, though, about this client attorney privilege, because, I mean, I wrote on here when I was listening to, and it's only about pending litigation. It doesn't mean every time we ask you a question, that we can only take it into an executive session.
No, that's not, that's not what they said. So
No, I know they didn't say that. I have a feeling it gets kind of, we start to feel that the only time we can talk to you is if we take it in closed doors.
Well, so obviously, if there's pending or contemplated litigation, that can go in executive session. I'll read you the clause. It's a list of ABC, when you can go in under attorney-client. C is, "A matter on which the duty of the attorney to the governmental body under the Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct of the State Bar of Texas clearly conflicts with this chapter." So what those disciplinary rules say is that when a lawyer gives advice to the client, the lawyer cannot tell anybody else, other than client folks or other people within their own law firm that need to help perform the service, what that advice was. Because you may or may not follow it, right? Just because, you know, it's the client's choice of what they want to do with the information. So once the attorney gives the advice, the rules of disciplinary procedure say, the client can choose to waive the privilege and tell a third party what the advice was. But the client can only do that after they've been given, where they can do an informed consent. Your consent to waive privilege has to be informed. So the general thinking is, if you don't know what the advice is, how can you be informed enough to make the decision? So you have to hear the answer to your legal question first in executive session, so that you even have enough information to be able to make an informed decision about whether you want to waive the privilege or not.
So having communications with you is really tricky. I think that's what I kinda just
Well, I wouldn't call it tricky. I mean, it just
And I'm not, it's not accusatory or anything.
Oh, no.
What is the process of having a conversation with you? You know, we wanna be transparent, but I appreciate what you're saying about, you know, protects your profession's status too. So it's like, when, I'm almost starting to hear that because of, you know, your professional needs, that we don't ever wanna ask you anything in public, because we also don't know what the response would be.
Frequently, I mean, a lot of questions that are just basic, like, you know, does so-and-so need to abstain? Is this
Can we talk about this? Is the agenda, does the agenda cover, you know, we're kind of branching off, you know, on a related topic. Is the agenda cover this, or, you know, are we getting too far off? Yeah, what does our ordinance say? Like, when you're saying, you know, what's the definition of family? Well, the ordinance says, let's set. Right. We really need to start to consider taking that offline, either sending a question or taking it into an executive session.
I don't write the rules.
Well, and that was one that I obviously had a really tough time for several years, of really understanding your role and as a citizen, how you fit in that.
Well, and that's understandable, because it can leave the impression, like, oh, what are they hiding, or why are they going back there? And really, it's nothing, and it's not unlawful. The law says you can do it, right? I mean, you know, you're not doing anything wrong, and sometimes, there, it may really be, I'm trying to think of a
Well, it's necessary. I got that. I think it's, once again, there has to be this sort of education for people who regularly participate, hearing, God, I had to run and get on council to finally get, you know, some answers. So, you know, I'd like to see a little bit more transparency, so that someone doesn't have to go through that, doesn't have to listen to an hour-long tunnel training, you know, doesn't have to read all that detail to find out exactly how it works.
Yeah, and the state laws don't make it easy. And I'll give you an example, this was not Van Alstine, where a sign ordinance is supposed to be content neutral. It regulates time, place, and manner, where they can be, what size they can be, that type of stuff. Not First Amendment, okay, a sign can say this or not say this type of thing. And there was a city that had a very, they, the planning director had adopted, drafted a very aggressive sign ordinance that violated the First Amendment, frankly. It was regulating content. And told the council, this regulates content. If somebody sues you when you're enforcing this ordinance, I will defend you best we can, but don't expect to win. And they said, okay, thank you very much, we're willing to take the risk. And they went out there and they adopted the ordinance. Well, I can't, I couldn't have said that in open session, because that's just inviting someone to sue, and then that costs the taxpayers money, right? I mean, litigation isn't free, and so you're trying to not spend money or not have to pay damage awards for violating the First Amendment. So you don't wanna announce in the open that you are. So that was an, it's just an example. Okay, next. So members of the governmental body have a right to attend a closed meeting. Others, they can invite anybody else in whose information or presence is needed to help with the discussion, but you cannot invite someone in who is your adversary. Like, if you Like, if you are in litigation, you could not invite the opposing party into the executive There's been a lot of questions on this, especially when it was first passed in 2013 about electronic bulletin boards, I think. Were you on the council at the time when this was looked at?
I wish I could.
Yes. So, the law in 2013 was changed to add an exception to the Open Meetings Act, that an electronic bulletin board where council members are posting about city business is not a meeting that has to be posted on an agenda. It's an exception now. It has to be in writing. There are very specific rules that have to be followed in order to be able to do this. One of the rules is that only the elected people or employees who are given permission to do it can post on the board. It's not for the public to post. However, the public has to be able to see it and be able to view what you all are posting on the electronic message board. And then there's rules about how long things have to stay on there, and then once they go off, how long they have to be retained, and things like that. So it can be done as long as you're very mindful to follow the rules and set it up where only certain people... Then like, one thing you have to guard against is if they, like, say a council member puts something on there and then two days later go, no, I think I've changed my mind, you know, a few people have talked to me and I see it different now, I want to take that off. It's not how it works. When you put it on, it's got to stay for the minimum time period, and then once it's not there to see anymore, it still has to be retained for, I think, six years. So it's a, once you put it on there, it's permanent. But, again, it's not for citizens to post. It's just for council members or employees. So during meetings, everybody has a different role. The mayor is the presiding officer. The mayor pro tem performs those duties. If the mayor is unable, refuses to act, or isn't present, if the mayor and the mayor pro tem are both absent, then any council member can decide, you know, decide amongst yourselves at the time. The mayor only votes in the case of a tie. And the mayor can call a special meeting on his own motion. And the mayor is required to call a special meeting if he receives a written request from three other council people to call a special meeting. It used to be discretionary on whether or not the mayor had to call a special meeting if other people were asking for it, but that law got changed to say if there's three people putting it in writing, then the mayor has to call the meeting.
I have a question about that.
Mm-hmm.
So, three council members need to call a special called meeting. If you receive three requests, would that trigger some sort of thought leading to maybe these three council members got together and talked about city business or a quorum?
It would, yes. It triggers that thought for me. And what we say about that is that if you, so the Open Meetings Act existed before this was added to the law. So if you took the position that the Open Meetings Act prevents discussion of a date, time, and topic, not discussion of the topic itself, just what the topic's going to be, then that would make this law meaningless. You would make it ineffective. And so it's presumed, under the rules of statutory construction, that the legislatures, when they decided this was okay, that they knew about the Open Meetings Act, but they still decided that in this one instance, it was okay.
So those, if you have three council members get together and say, hey, this topic needs to be discussed, when they send three separate requests, that's permissible by law?
It hasn't been litigated, but the effect of it not being permissible is that what the legislature added to the law is completely ineffective. And you're supposed to construe acts together to give a meaning to their words. And so that's generally how it's interpreted, to give meaning to their words.
It's a, three people getting together and sitting there saying, hey, I think we need to talk about X, Y, Z. That's not a...
Well, you're not going to talk about X, Y, Z.
No. We need to talk about X, Y, Z. We need a special meeting. There's nothing wrong with that.
That's what the law says.
Okay.
I mean, it doesn't say there's nothing wrong with it, but it says you can do it.
Right.
Right. You have to be very careful, I mean...
And it doesn't say, does it say up there about put something in writing?
Says on the application.
Oh, on the application?
Yeah, no, no. It's, I mean, I've seen it done by email, just three different people emailing in there and saying...
That may be something that, if that were to occur, I mean, do we need to maybe talk about some sort of process as far as maybe emailing that through you or... I'm just kind of, I'm just kind of, just trying to prevent anybody from getting...
I would think that Frank would be the one to keep tabs on that. If three councilmen let him know via telephone or email that this is a topic that we need to talk about, then I would expect him to call me and say, hey, we're going to need to set...
It's supposed to go through you as the mayor.
The mayor's in charge, is he a kid? Well, sure, okay. Well, yeah, you can, well, you can certainly email me, but I think it would be the same.
I sent Frank.
Well, most people interpret application as something in writing, right? And it's not the best choice of words that they picked, but that is the word that's actually in the statute. So, any other questions on that? It's a great question. I mean, it is not, yeah. So, quorum is three out of five. For a special called meeting or for a meeting where you're adopting the tax rate, it's two-thirds, which is actually 3.3, but you have to round up. So it takes four to have a quorum, to call a meeting. The council can determine its own rules for its proceedings. You're entitled to vote or abstain on every question. You're entitled to speak and make motions as members of the governing body. And you are the legislatures. Your primary duty is policymaking. That's the description out of the 2015 handbook. So, okay, next.
And my understanding on the majority of the council members is if you had one council member that whatever wasn't there anymore, you were down to four people, you still had to have three.
Yeah, we just changed that a couple of years ago, right? Because weren't there an instance where we had an ordinance where you had to have four votes for some sort of topic?
That was this, that was the variances, wasn't it? Was it, yeah?
And then we got that changed where it's just majority, right?
No, I mean, I thought their rules were that it doesn't change in time.
It depends on why you have, because they can see.
If you only have four council members, you still have to have three to have a quorum.
Yes.
That's what I was saying.
Yes.
Yes.
Even though if one of them has resigned, you now have a replacement, you still have to have a majority of the people.
Yeah, that's what I would...
For a quorum.
Because majority is one more.
But then you're, you could pass something by a two-to-one vote if only three people were present.
That's what I guess I'm kind of asking, because I thought I was understanding, what is this thing about it doesn't change in time? So you have to have a majority of three, and that doesn't change.
No, that's to have a quorum. That's to be able to call the meetings order.
Oh, oh, quorum, that's what, yeah, okay.
So once a quorum is established, most things are all, there are exceptions, but most things are approved by a majority vote of the quorum present.
So both voters.
But there are exceptions to that. There are certain things that require a minimum number of votes, but most things don't. And so, yes, if only three people are here, you can conduct business or pass something by two-to-one. Obviously, at a special meeting where it takes three, where it takes four people to have the quorum, then it's going to take three votes or something like that. Okay. So the city secretary is an officer of the municipality, attends meetings, keeps the minutes of the proceedings, they keep the originals and put the seals on the ordinances, attest to the ordinances, they keep all the contracts of the city and basically the general record-keeping. And then, because they are an officer of the city, the city can, you know, prescribe by ordinance other duties that you want that officer to fulfill. But that's generally at a meeting, the city secretary's role. And here, a prior city manager decided they wanted to call it city clerk, so it's called city clerk.
So it's just going to act as our city clerk.
So is our clerk under the same standards as the city secretary?
Yes.
Since you signed nothing as a city secretary?
It's, it's just, they're synonyms. City clerk or city secretary is the same.
So the city clerk is required to have all of the training and requirements of the city secretary?
There's not a minimum qualification standard in the law. There are certifications that they can get, but the law doesn't say they're required to have them.
So are these requirements, these are requirements?
These are things, these are duties to do.
For the city secretary, so is our city clerk under the same requirements?
Yes.
And we have more than one city clerk? No, they're not called city, they're not clerks?
Well, they may be a utility clerk or something, but they're not the...
Clerk is clerk to me. So what are our ladies called?
It was a prior city, I, wasn't your predecessor called the city secretary?
Yes.
And then when, I don't know why, it wasn't consulted by that city manager, but when Jennifer got the position, he changed the name to city clerk.
What are the other positions that are also called clerk?
They're not this officer.
They're not that.
No.
So Jennifer's job description specifically covers that, and she isn't an officer, they're not.
Yes.
What is an officer? Somebody who has authority to pack and prescribe away on the cap? Yeah, I mean, I always thought you meant somebody who like had some signatory and things like that.
I want to bore you with the long, long story of why I have to know that. Yeah, I mean, all of those duties are straight out of the local government code, chapter for...
But she is, we only have one.
She is our city secretary, we just call her city clerk.
For the city attorney, the city as an entity is the actual client. No one person is the client, just the entity. And now naturally, all entities give direction and take action through people, you know, they're not inanimate objects that, you know, are just there. So, you know, generally, for a city attorney, the council, the manager, the mayor give direction, you know, ask the questions, you know, we need an ordinance for this, you know, whatever it may be. The third bullet point is kind of what the rules of disciplinary conduct say we have to do. And then, when your city attorney is not an employee, you can communicate with them in executive session by telephone. If you don't have them come to the rest of the meeting, when you go into executive session for the legal advice, you can have them on the telephone for some reason. And really, you know, larger cities like Dallas, Irving, Plano have in-house city attorneys and whole legal departments in-house. And I guess they think, well, if the city attorney is an employee, there's no reason they shouldn't be there in person at the meeting. But if you use an outside firm, you can have the lawyer on the phone for the executive session if they're not there for the rest of the meeting.
So they are a contract?
I'm not an employee, that's correct.
They're not an employee, just...
Role of the city manager, the local government code, just like for the city secretary/clerk gives the duties, administer the municipal business, and then the governing body ensures the administration is efficient. The local government code also says the governing body by ordinance delegates to the city manager any additional powers or duties that the governing body considers proper for efficient administration. And once you have an election for a city manager from the government, which Van Alstine has had, you have to have an ordinance that says this is the city manager's duties, and Van Alstine has required with that statute, and you do have that ordinance in place. Next. Okay, zoning and plating. I'm going to try and start talking faster. Zoning regulations, there's four basic criteria that should be reviewed when you're looking at a zoning case. You know, what's your comprehensive plan say? The nature and degree of the adverse impact the use could have on neighboring properties, the suitability of the land for the zoning being considered, and how that relates to the public health, safety, and general welfare in consideration of, you know, what else is around it. Next. So your tools when it comes to land use are the comprehensive plan and then the comprehensive zoning ordinance. This is generally what Chapter 211 of the Texas Local Government Code says you can regulate with a zoning ordinance. It's pretty much what you would expect to see, about height, number of stories, size of, you know, front side and backyards, density, how many structures are within, you know, a given area, and the use. And then you can take, you know, historical and cultural, architectural, significant things into account. Next. There are some limitations on zoning. You can regulate these things on the right, but there are state laws that limit how you can regulate them. For example, for the sale of alcoholic beverages, the state law says you can require a business selling alcohol to be at least 300 feet away from a church. So as a city, you can adopt in your zoning ordinance that they have to be 300 feet away or any distance that is shorter, but you cannot require a distance that is longer because state law has limited your land use authority in that particular area. Typically, with zoning, the city is divided into districts, and what I mean by districts is commercial, you know, C1, C2, single-family, industrial, multifamily, things like that. The regulations for each of those districts should be generally uniform within the district, but the different districts can vary. For example, your standards for an industrial district are obviously going to be different than your standards for a single-family home district. State law does not require you to have a comprehensive plan. It makes the comprehensive plan, whether to have one discretionary, but if you have zoning, then you by default are going to have to have a comprehensive plan because you're... your zoning should be adopted in accordance with the comprehensive plan. And an example of that would be if you, on the comprehensive plan, if it shows, you know, say a 30-acre areas, this we want, would be single-family homes, and there's like a vacant one-acre tract in the middle, and the owner, and there's not a house built on it yet, and the owner of that tract came in and applied to, to change it to industrial because they want to open a welding shop on that tract, you know, well, our comprehensive plan doesn't really call for industrial in that area. It calls for residential. So would you maybe allow duplexes instead of a single-family home? Yeah, that's not that far out of line. Because it is a plan, it's not written in stone. Otherwise, what's the point of having a public hearing about what the final zoning should be? But it is supposed to be your guide. And that's just a list of things to take into, um, account and with what the purpose of having zoning regulations is. Try to control traffic, obviously, fire safety, adequate light in the air, overcrowding, things like that. And zoning came to be because of back, I guess it was pre-depression, mainly up in the Northeast. Things just got built on top of each other, a lot of residential units, and they were kind of deplorable living conditions, um, for blue-collar people. And a fire broke out and it, in New York, I think it was in New York, I don't know how to pronounce it in the city, and, um, it just took out blocks of residential living spaces, and a lot of people were injured or killed, and that's when courts finally started going, okay, through police powers, cities should be able to have some rules about where we're going to build things. We're not going to slaughter a house next to someone's home, things like that. Next. These are the elements that can be in a comprehensive plan, land use, transportation, parks, housing in public facilities, and, you know, just your policies and goals of how you want this city to develop. Next. So when you want to change zoning, somebody applies to have their zoning classification changed, like if they want to go from single-family to two-family, and a notice has to be mailed to everyone that lives within 200 feet, um, or owns property within 200 feet, you don't have to live there, you just have to own it, at least 10 days before the planning and zoning commission meeting because, um, it's a public hearing, and they, along with anybody else who wants to come, has a right to be heard. The council also has to have a public hearing before you can change a zoning classification, and notice has to be in the newspaper at least 15 days before the council hearing.
Now, that's a minimum, correct?
That is a minimum.
You could do more than 200 feet or more than 10 days.
You could, but you need to do all of the cases the same.
Right.
Yeah.
And you can't change, change anything unless you start over again?
If there's a substantial change in what the...
But if, if money is substantial?
If they wanted a, um, a more, like, if you give a notice to go from single-family to two-family, and then the applicant comes to the meeting and says, hey, actually, I'd rather have multi-family, you couldn't grant the multi-family at the meeting because that's a more intense use than what the public was giving, given notice was going to be considered. But if they had applied for multi-family and came to the meeting and said, hey, I, I would just rather have a quadplex or duplex or townhome, that could be granted because it's a less intense use than what was applied for. It creates less traffic, less crowding, um, but it's still residential. But you cannot go more intense.
But if you want a townhouse, is there a, is there a difference in a townhouse and a multi-family? Did you say that?
Yes, and that doesn't mean you can't say, hey, we need to start over, but technically, if it's a less intense use, you wouldn't have to. Another example, like, if they apply for a five-acre tract and they came to the meeting and said, hey, I bought a half-acre tract next door, now I have five and a half acres, can you, you know, rezone the whole five and a half? The answer is no, because the notices and the measurements were all for five acres. So you can either start over for the whole five and a half or approve the five acres and run the other, your new half acre through as a separate case.
How'd something change where they didn't have to publish something in the paper anymore, even though we're still doing it?
You used to have to publish for P and Z, but we don't publish for P and Z anymore, we only get a mail.
Yeah, so then that will look fine. And you are not filing.
But you do publish.
You are. You used, you used to do more than what state law required, and now the ordinance, the council, the prior council changed the ordinance to mirror state law. Zoning ordinance is thus be adopted by a majority of the council, but if there's a protest, then it takes a supermajority vote. So a protest is if the owner changes their mind and they come and say, I don't want it, and they file a protest, or if 20% of the area within the 200 feet files protests against it, then that triggers a supermajority vote in order to grant the request. Bested rights is a concept that was put into the law in chapter 245 of the Texas Government Code. Really, it's a permitting statute, and what it says is when you submit a complete permit application, whatever the law was, once your application is complete, or, or the rules that apply to you. So say you apply, you get a building permit, and you're building a new commercial structure adjacent to residential, and when you got your permit, the ordinance said a wood screening fence is required between the business and the homes. But before they finished construction and got a CO, you change your ordinance to say a masonry fence is required. That new rule doesn't apply to that person because they already have their permit. Next. Okay, next. These are a few frequently asked questions we get in the air, and I hit on this already. Can you increase the area of the land subject to a zoning change? And that's no, you can't rezone more property than what the notice provided. Um, a lot of people ask what is spot zoning? And that is kind of the example I gave you earlier where you're rezoning something that's vastly different from everything else around it. And spot zoning is not, um, favored by the courts, and if that got challenged, probably would be upheld. Next. Does the applicant have the right to withdraw their zoning application after the notices have been done? If they've changed your mind, the answer is no. You could allow them to if you want to, but they don't have a right to withdraw it once you've, um, done the notices. But they could file a written protest and trigger a supermajority vote as a way to try to defeat it. Plating is found in your subdivision regulations, which is chapter 38 in your Code of Ordinances. Plating is the dividing of property into lots and laying out the streets and the alleys and the utility easements. Um, and those are the minimum things that a plat should identify. Um, and your subdivision regulations have, um, a lot of additional requirements and all the technical details required to be complied with and things you have to show on a plat. Next. Um, once improvements are made, like the streets are put in and they're inspected and, um, they pass inspection, the plat gets recorded in the county land records, and when the plat's recorded, those streets become the city streets instead of the, the landowners' streets. And same with the easements, et cetera. They do have to be notarized before they can be filed. Next. When you do a plat, you do a preliminary plat, and then they come back through and do a final plat. And so, most people who aren't familiar with plating is like, well, why would you make them do two? It seems like it is more cumbersome. But in reality, developers and property owners prefer the preliminary plat because the preliminary plat is just kind of general, and they don't have to have all of the final engineering done, and the engineering can be expensive. So it's a way to tell them, yes, you're on the right track. If your final plat is close to this, then it's something that's going to be approved. So it saves them that engineering money if their preliminary plat is wrong or they're, they're not doing something right, they haven't finished it. Your subdivision ordinance sets forth what the standards for approval are. If a plat meets all of those standards, you cannot deny it. It is not, um, really a legislative function, it's more of a ministerial function. And, um, so that's your general rule. Next slide. You have 30 days to act on a plat or it's deemed approved, but that, you, most cities have the two-step process. You're going to P and Z and then to council, and so there's an additional, it's 30 days for each body. The engineer is the one who's going to tell you whether a plat meets all of the technical requirements or not. Um, and a best practice tip is if the plat does not meet the standards that the engineer would put in writing where it's sufficient, so that there's a basis for the denial. If a plat is denied, the person who applied for the plat can ask for the city to certify its reasons for denial in writing, and the city is required to do that. So that's why you want to be sure before you deny it that your engineer has told you you have a basis for doing so. And then this is our last topic, is the municipal court and its role in the citations. State law, um, authorizes the creation of the municipal court and says what their jurisdiction is. Um, generally, it's traffic citations, city ordinance violations, and other class C misdemeanors that occur within the city limits where the punishment is not jail time. So basically, fine-only offenses. Next. So how does a complaint or a citation get to be in front of the court? Are there a, um, police officer observes a violation and writes the citation, or a certified code enforcement officer? Police officer gets a complaint, looks into it, and determines there's sufficient cause to file a report with the court? Or any citizen can come to the court clerk and fill out a complaint and allege that somebody has done something wrong or violated a law, a misdemeanor that is punishable by fine, and the clerk then has to open that case, um, and it gives, refers that complaint or citation to the prosecutor, um, for review. The prosecutor has to determine whether or not there's probable cause exists to prosecute and, um, take the case in front of the judge or not. Next slide. The prosecutor serves as the attorney for the state, um, and this is the part that's really important. It is, the primary duty of the prosecutor is not to get guilty, guilty convictions, is to see that justice is done. And there are rules of judicial conduct and professional conduct that, um, that can, you know, govern the prosecutor in performing those duties. Next slide. The judge interprets the law and has to make non-bias decisions. Um, they are a public officer, but they're not a local government official, um, they're not a lawmaker, they're not a policymaker. Um, they are independent and sovereign in and of themselves, and they have to exercise independent judgment in performing their duties. There's no one that can really review particular decisions, and the council does appoint the judge because you can decide if you think they're doing a good job, you want to appoint them or reappoint them, but you can't really direct them in their day-to-day duties. Um, oh, I, I just got ahead of myself. You all appoint the judge, um, you create the ordinances that they have to enforce, decide whether folks are guilty or not guilty. When something's in front of the judge, are there, whoever is the accused or the person, um, being charged in the complaint, they can say whether they want their trial to be in front of the jury or whether or not they want the judge to decide whether they're innocent or guilty. That is up for that person. They can choose whichever one they prefer, and, um, even the prosecutor, you know, presents the evidence trying to show guilt beyond a reasonable doubt, but otherwise, there's not supposed to be any attempted outside influence by any party over a judge. And the judge just has to be impartial. They can't take direction or be lobbying to find guilty or not guilty one way or another. We talked about that already. So the council, when you adopt the ordinance, you can set what the maximum fine can be within the limits of state law, um, but you just can't tell the judge what the fine should be in any particular case, um, or whether or not a case should be dismissed. That's up to the prosecutor or after the trial, the judge. Next. I know that's a lot.
Will we appoint our judge?
Yeah.
Okay. And do we set fines?
The ordinances, like an ordinance, um, that has a penalty, the general penalties in municipal ordinances are, um, a maximum of $500, and so that's what we put in all of the ordinances that set a fine. But that doesn't mean the judge is going to impose $500. He may say $150 after they're found guilty. It's a maximum. But you could set the maximum to be...
You didn't mow your grass and we set what the fine is.
You could set the maximum to be lower. Uh, when the, when the fine is for an ordinance that is a zoning ordinance or is a public health and safety ordinance, like sanitation, things like that, the maximum fine can be as high as $2,000 instead of 500. But most of your ordinances are going to be a maximum of 500.
And is there a, is there a discipline for the judge under contract with the city and the contract is to give him a U.D. year or not?
I think, I think he's down every two years. I can't remember.
But he is under contract with the city. Instead of red one. But I, I thought it was a year, maybe two years.
Yeah, now that you're qualified, there is a general penalty provision that says maximum of 500 unless it's some health or safety, then maximum of 2,000. I would guess, probably in chapter one, I would guess.
I'm guessing the other conundrums, this went on long here, but it was very, very beneficial. And I guess my suggestion going forward is every time this council has new members, I don't know why we don't have this information available for them. Makes us a lot more productive and we don't make people sit and go through a real long briefing session if there was some sort of education new members could get. I mean, we come into this absolutely, I could have been in a dark closet, you know, earthly environment.
I know TML does a newly elected officials orientation, I don't know how soon after I don't know how soon after the election day it is.
But I mean, and you can't take the time to go to that stuff. We need an orientation of some sort.
I think they would get those materials online.
Yeah, I think, I think TML posts their new election or their new elected official training online after the training, or at least in the papers.
Number four. Discussion regarding the gender request from Lee Thomas regarding a procedure for processing complaints.
Okay, a little bit background on this. I've been working on this, kind of adopted it since our first or second meeting. So, we're going around, I got Frank one day and I, and this is just a discussion, so please put in five, ten cents, twenty-five cents. So, came up with three different, we came up with three different types of complaints. You have a standard complaint, which is just pretty much somebody's upset about something. You have a legal complaint, which will be always will be handled by legal counsel. You have anonymous complaints, which really throws a lot of people off. So, standard complaints, we have policy procedures right now for each department to handle their, each complaint by a department, it's handled by a department. We've got those policies. But what we've seen is what about complaints against outside the department? Claiming against Frank, claiming against mayor or city council, something of that nature. How do we handle that? And that's, that's mainly where I've been working on now. So, I've talked to a couple other city employees and, I don't know, elected officials. And nobody's really, nobody really wants to share a lot other than point you in the direction of the website and say that's typically where we do it. Nobody really wants to discuss their, their internal organs, how they handle complaints. But I'm still having a couple calls every time. So, like I said before, can we all agree, I might not agree, but policy procedure right now is set that we handle, that each department handles their complaint, either department or.
If it's an employee's, which department?
Right, it's a complaint within the department.
And that's in the handles?
That's in, that's in all the handles. So, legal is handled by legal counsel. So, anything outside a department, which would be higher echelon escalated. I've just, I've put down so far that the complaint is received. This can be written and written complaint to city clerk, or we can, in total with Frank, we can actually change up the complaint section in our, on the email and add a line out of so we can start accepting, that we can accept complaints by email or by online. So, it's not just dropped on tables or dropped on desk, we can actually do it online through the A website.
So, written, written one way or the other, whether you fill out the form or it's a written email or a written letter?
Written letter, yes, written. So, then notification received. So, whoever has the complaint, we notify them, hey, it's been, it's been received.
So, who do they give it to? Who needs to be the person who receives it?
Well, we can't vote on a policy to that.
No, we're not, no.
No, we're just talking about steps, right?
Well, I've talked to some people about that. Because some people don't want to hand it to a person. Some people want to have it sent in, that's why the, the online form works best for them.
But even if it's online, I mean, it's got to go to one person or somebody to process it, is all I'm saying.
Right. That's where I'm working on, where our online stuff goes. So, notification received, and one thing that I've always liked to see is change of custody, who's got it. So, if it's, if the city clerk gets it and it goes to her and she says, hey, I've got, I've got this, I've read the complaint, notifies the person, hey, I've got your complaint, I've read it, and I'm passing it on to this person. And they will take these steps. And please let me know if you don't hear anything back from that person, that way the change of custody of that complaint is passed off to the next person. And it's, hey, here's my correspondence that it was passed on. Proceed with the steps, whatever those steps may be, update regularly on where it's at in the process, present the finding, and close it out. I mean, it's pretty simple. We just need to define the steps. But we can also go back to the policy and procedure items for the department or if it was legal.
Where is, where are the policy and procedure documents?
The, and the, I know the police department has their policy and procedures.
Yeah, but you said that the complaints each department, the policy and procedure states that each department handles their own complaints. Where is that policy and procedure?
Yeah, that's just the personnel policy.
So, it doesn't involve any other.
Correct.
And I want to, I want to ask about the personnel policy or complaints against each person, if it is an employee, is this put in their personnel file?
I think that's something that we're going to talk about a little bit in the executive session.
And, well, I have three questions, if it was put in their personnel file and if the employee was allowed to review the personnel file and can those files be seen by council?
That's a big question.
You have a, you have a special right of access to city documents as a council person in your capacity as a council person. If, but, but beyond looking at the document, making any notes that you might use for your own purposes, you can't distribute that document the way you would if you got through, say, an open records request. So, if you want to do anything with the document, then you would have to request it be an open records process, just as you would if you were an ordinary citizen. So, you have a special right of access because you're an official that you can ask for any of the city's documents that you would otherwise be authorized to see. You might not be authorized to see, like, someone's protected healthcare information because that typically is.
Well, I'm referring to is their, their personnel file.
Well, protected healthcare information is often kept in a personnel file in a confidential section of it. It's not unusual for that to be done. And that is typically under statute on a need-to-know basis. So, you would have to have some special need-to-know to see what someone's, you know, doctor's note was, that kind of thing. But with regard to their personnel file, then you could, you could use someone's person, a city employee's personnel file, they're a city record and it's a public record.
So, can the employee see their own personnel file?
Typically, yes, typically. There are exceptions to that, but the employee would, would likely have an open, or, excuse me, a special right of access to their own file. Now, that doesn't mean there's not a process to request that. Different cities handle that differently. I work with cities that require you to put that request in writing. I work with cities that allow you to just walk in and say, hey, can I see my, see my personnel file? Again, that doesn't necessarily mean they get to make a copy of the file or take the file with them, but they can walk in or they can use whatever the quest process is to actually see a copy of the personnel file.
And no one's in it?
I'm sorry? And no one's in it?
No one's in it?
Yes, ma'am.
So, and there is no policy that requires that this, that complaints against the person is in the personnel file?
Well, that's not exactly true. If there is a complaint that's generated, that becomes a document of the city. And then, what happens with the document that is the city's document? If someone, if someone executes a complaint, then where should it go? And different, again, different cities handle that differently. Some of them keep it in personnel files, it's not unusual at all. Some of them keep it in a special departmental file. But, but you have to maintain the document somehow in accordance with the open records act, excuse me, public information.
And there are exceptions, I, there are exceptions where, like, if, I don't know, if someone were falsely accused of sexual harassment and it was determined that the sexual harassment didn't happen, that even under the public information act, that can be withheld because that would be damaging to the falsely accused for that to be.
There's some.
But do we still have to keep that? But that is, you said it, and always, and it can be kept, any, anywhere, not in the personnel file, but it does still have.
It does have to be maintained.
Under their records retention policy.
Right.
Yes.
And I don't think our policies cover that.
Most of them don't. That's typically something that's controlled by statute. Most personnel policies don't speak to that.
So, actually, we don't have any policy or procedure set for personnel? What I just asked is not, does the, does the personnel policy or is?
Where a file goes once a complaint is made is not covered, at least based on my understanding, I don't believe that's covered by the city's personnel policies. And would not, but would be. That's something that can even vary from department to department.
So, what happens to those complaints?
What happens to those complaints is that they're maintained in accordance with your records retention schedule, which I believe you guys have adopted the state's retention schedule. And so, they're, and each, that's one of those questions that can get hyper-technical. So, I can give you a link in answer, if somebody makes a personnel complaint, how long is it, how long does the city have to wait? But it, can you maintain it separate departmental file, can you maintain it in a personnel file? And personnel file and the departmental file are, are, except for the exceptions to the storage or production under the Texas rule of the similar procedure, federal is a similar procedure, open records. So, if you make a complaint, you make a complaint about somebody and it involves something that's a protected healthcare interest, that complaint can be considered a confidential file and you keep it in a certain place. If you make a complaint that somebody rear into you in the parking lot is, is an employee, that complaint might go into personnel file because it doesn't have any personal identifiable information.
But I'm not hearing specifically what this city does.
Well, and, and I don't know, I don't know the answer to that specifically.
And I wasn't asking you, actually. I mean, we don't have anything from what I read, we don't have anything. So, I'm hearing lots of options, but I don't think we have anything specific.
But like she also said, it's typically, they don't have a policy for that, it's a.
Well, just because people typically, doesn't mean that we have to stick with typical.
Perhaps we need to adopt a policy.
Well, you actually can't adopt a policy because that would probably fall under, under a personnel matter, which is something that's delegated by contract and by your election to the city manager. Now, what you can do is direct your employee that you would like for him to conduct X, Y, Z policy this way, that you would like for him to do something. But the council doesn't have authority to adopt policies affecting personnel matters.
Okay, so if you've got a complaint against the city, then that goes to the city manager, right?
If it, depending on who's making the complaint, if it's a citizen, my expectation would be that that would go to the city manager at some point in the, in the chain, depending upon how it gets.
And if it was against the city manager, it would go to the mayor, is that correct?
That has been my experience.
Okay, what if it's against the council, who does it go to then?
I think it would probably still be served upon the mayor.
Upon the mayor.
Because he's the representative of the council and then the mayor would typically delegate that based upon the type of complaint.
So, I'm still searingly, at some point, we need to come up with some sort of process.
Right.
And reasonable timeline in which to respond.
Well, what she's given me is that's, that's.
Yeah, and certainly you can adopt a process as to how you want complaints that come to you.
Right.
How you want those to be submitted to the manager.
So, we can adopt a complaint process.
All right, now, I've got, that's, that's a good, a, a, anonymous complaints.
What do you do with those?
What do you, they're hard to respond to.
I would treat them the same, honestly.
City clerk.
I would, I would treat them the same based upon not the complaint, but, but the topic or person or employee that they're complaining about. So, say you get an anonymous complaint that the meter reader was rude to me, then, and I don't know that you guys have meter readers anymore, that's a sort of a term, but, but your utilities person was rude to me, well, then that's something that would probably go to their supervisor or if they were identified, or an department head if they weren't identified, and it would work its way up the chain as necessary.
So, if we had a complaint against something that was P&amp;Z?
Yes, ma'am.
It would be sent to the P&amp;Z and they are the ones who would handle that complaint?
Your P&amp;Z has a chair, okay. So, your P&amp;Z chair might be consulted, but since the council has appointment authority, I think that's one of those areas that's kind of a, a little bit of a gray area where boards that you have appointment authority for, you actually have authority over. So, your P&amp;Z, your EDC, your CDC, that's probably something you're talking about, does a complaint come to the council? That would probably be one that I would say.
They're not personnel, they're not employees.
Right.
So, EDC, CDC, P&amp;Z, Harvard's board, they all have the council not to, not to those departments.
Yeah, because you're, the council's the only one with authority to remove or replace those people if you think that a complaint would warrant that type of action.
But then, then those people don't have employment, they're not, they don't have employment files or anything else.
Right, no, there's no file for them.
That would just be a way to complain where you're sure that it's not, it's not resources or.
And we're still going to file them.
You might, you might create a file for that complaint, that it would be the council's file, not, not a personnel file.
But you'd still have to keep that file?
Yes, ma'am.
What's the next step on that?
I've got a few more people that I've reached out to and talked to, and so, got with, so, one, need to talk with them. And I'd like to define the steps of whether it's an investigation, collection of documents or whatnot, I'd like to, I'd like to clear up those steps. And I would like to give sort of, like, to Frank about the website and getting that changed up.
First step, you think you should make before the council made it approved?
We're going to have something to do with.
But you're not going to, going to the website and doing it?
Well, we can do it, I can actually do it.
Yeah, I, I'm starting on timing because I'm still getting things in my email box and I don't like them to slip through. So, I guess my only thing is some sort of law to start saying, okay, here's one, you know.
We have our council meeting for this council event.
Do we, do we get an office? Do we all?
We have a special one. So, we still, though, at this point in time, though, we have, we are processless.
That's why we're talking about, so now, paying a complaint process.
So, what are we doing here?
There's nothing you can do until it's on a council agenda. It doesn't make you unique if that provides any comfort, I don't know if it is or not.
Yeah, I guess it just, it just makes, you know, if I'm getting a complaint, it just means I'm now still responsible to go and do all the research and follow up and everything.
Well, you can, you can delegate that, I mean, you have the authority, I think, to delegate that.